Able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Recording in progress.
All right, welcome everyone to our City Council meeting for November 6th. Great to have all of you here in person. And while we do have our council here in person as well as some staff, just a reminder that we continue to have people from the community and members of our staff joining virtually. So I do toggle back and forth between my account and all of you here in person. And of course, my Zoom just said it needs to reactivate or something, so it'll take me a second to sign on. And then just a reminder that we take breaks every 90 to 120 minutes between items. So we begin every meeting with our open comment period. And this is an opportunity for anyone from the public to speak on items that we will not be taking public testimony on later in the agenda. Each person has up to four minutes for a total of 20 minutes. I will be keeping track of time through a number of ways, the clock there and the stoplight here. Just note that if I cut you off, it's because we need to make sure that you're staying within your time and allowing for as many people to speak as possible. So I encourage you to be respectful, be concise, make sure your comments are directed me at me as the presiding officer. And that note that we don't respond during open comment period, but if there is an item to follow up on, please make sure our clerk has your information so we can do so. You're invited to speak in the order that you've signed up. I have a list right here. I will also be calling on those who are raising their hand in Zoom. I'll ask the clerk to notify me if anyone is waiting to speak in Zoom. Otherwise, I think we will go ahead and get started. If you have any materials that you need to distribute to the council, please hand those to our clerk. All right, I have Paula Harden up first. Come on up, take your time.
Display something, do I just lay it on the table?
Play it.
Make it be projected.
We'll start the time when we get it.
Okay, Paula Harden, disability rights activist. First off, I want to say that I'm very disappointed in the deterioration of the leadership of Rochester, Minnesota. There was an article in the newspaper that was like waking up in opposite world because they were condemning Councilmember Molly Dennis as being the one who was being wasting money and, you know, misbehaving when the fact is that with ADHD, which I have spent many months studying, means that if they'd just been nice to her, it wouldn't have happened. And she was the only one that voted to not increase property taxes by 9.44%, which means to people like me, disabled and older, I need a no vote to the extraordinarily high property tax opposed. If Rochester's website wasn't such a mess and it continues to violate W3 standard for accessibility, maybe I could find a list of all the years of property tax increase by percentages. But I would bet that 9.44 is the highest among the first five. The 6.4 and 6.5 tax increases were cruel too. As you can see, I show my property tax increase on the top thing and the percentage of my social security disability insurance increase on the bottom thing. And my property tax rose from 888 after exclusions to 202 in 2015 to 127,600, not quite double of an increase. I don't remember for certain which percentage of increase the subsequent years have been, but still, you know, 6.4, 6.5, and they used to be like two and three percent. And so the new property taxes will put my taxes over $2,000 before this exclusion. And as you can see by my social security number percentages of increase, I don't have that much more money. And Minnesota has a trick that I consider double taxation. When your estimated market value increases, the exceptions decrease. I also oppose the the extension of the temporary sales tax from 40 years ago because they will have an adverse effect on all people, especially those with fixed incomes. It is a failure of leadership not to have coordinated the increased city taxes with the additional burdens from the county and Rochester schools. Priority failures are another reason that I oppose both tax increases. I do not agree with the priorities for which the money is being determined to use. They've done nothing for me for disability related issues for a long time. They also defer to people like the CEO of Mayo Clinic that makes $3.48 million a year in 2021. And Mayo gave it 100 of its top leaders an increase of 27%, which I'll never see in my lifetime. My property taxes are pan for all the nonprofit protection with the police and fire. When we need social services to prevent the police and fire from became becoming the priority instead of the residents who need help like the homeless.
It's time to wrap up, Ms. Harden.
Okay, just furthermore, I just want to also say that to support my assertion that not just this council, but prior councils have been reckless with money. A perfect example is the drunk fence that cost over $145,000 and was recently removed.
Thank you, Ms. Harden. All right, just a note to my colleagues on council that if everybody takes the full time, we have 65 minutes just signed up for open comments. So keep that in mind as we move forward. I'll call Dan Fyfield up.
Good evening, Council President Carlson, members of the City Council. My name is Dan Fyfield and I am the president of the Landing MN. For the past five years, we have watched as the numbers of those individuals experiencing homelessness has dramatically grown in Rochester, Minnesota. In just the past 10 months, we have seen an increase of nearly 100%. Sadly, we've not seen the same growth in the number of emergency shelter beds available to this to those experiencing homelessness. Last month alone, the Landing MN worked with 447 unique individuals that were seeking services. Given that approximately 10% of those individuals are housed, which is a number of 44, that leaves with a total of 403 of our fellow citizens that are without permanent shelter on any given night. In July of last year, the Housing Stability Team of Olmsted County conducted a three night count of unsheltered individuals and found that a total of 177 unique individuals were unsheltered on the streets. That 177 unique individuals above and beyond the number of emergency shelter beds available in Rochester, Minnesota. Currently, there are a total of 72 emergency shelter beds in Rochester. Fifty of those beds are considered low barrier beds and are located at the Rochester Community Warming Center. The remaining 22 beds are located at the Dorothy Day House and are considered high barrier beds. Just to differentiate low barrier beds or, excuse me, low barrier beds allow levels of intoxication, whereas high barrier beds do not allow any level of alcohol to be in a potential guest system. 177 unique individuals that with passage of the proposed ordinance to ban camping will be subject to criminalization for trying to find overnight shelter in a city park, sidewalk, city owned property, in their parked car on a city street or city owned property or parking lot. 177 unique individuals that are given no other resources to go to for shelter that night away from the elements, away from potential danger of living on the streets. Passing ordinances that will place criminal charges, assess unpayable fines will do nothing more than increase the trauma and resistance that is already being experienced by these individuals. Criminalization, criminalizing this behavior will not make it go away. It will make it just that much more difficult for these individuals to take next steps. Creating a ban on camping on or in any city, I'm sorry, creating a ban on camping on or in any city owned property will push this group to seek shelter in other areas such as abandoned homes, buildings, parked cars, open garages, or other privately owned areas, solving nothing other than taking the issue off the city's plate. Until other resources are made available, imposing criminal punishment for somebody trying to find shelter is heartless and is a heartless and uncaring act, causing additional trauma and hardship. Making comments that by initiating stricter ordinances will push them towards available services is a fallacy. There are no additional services to push them to. Most individuals that are experiencing homelessness in our city are on the COC HMIS housing list. There is no available truly affordable housing in Olmsted County for these individuals. So what's, what services do you want to push them to? The Board of Directors of the Landing MN urged the city leaders to take a very careful look at the next steps that they are considering and what implications that they may have. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, we have a couple of virtual attendees. Destiny Whitehorn, please unmute yourself. If you're in Zoom, you can use the unmute, otherwise press star six. There you go, speak when you're ready.
Hello, can I be heard?
Yep, please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm sorry, this is Stephanie Whitehorn. My daughter is also here listening and we're just listening in and we just want to, I just want to add our support to what Dan has already mentioned. We just do want to speak that I personally do not feel that criminalizing homelessness at any part of the day is going to be a solution to helping us reduce the number of unhoused individuals that we currently have within our city. I do believe that this will create an additional barrier and then we'll have additional unseen consequences such as if they are arrested, the towing of their vehicle, which may have all of their life's possessions in it. I just personally feel that as a community, we need to come up with a better option other than criminalizing what is already a bad situation for so many people that are faced with homelessness and faced with not being able to be housed. As Dan did said, what exactly would be the resources that we would be, that would be provided to the individuals on this first offense warning? As many people know, my, my husband Bud, who may actually be there in the cert team, we work a lot with the underserved community. And there are very limited resources to give people in order to help them with the issue of homelessness and unhoused. So I just don't think that criminalizing this action is going to result in a more positive situation for our community as a whole. I think that the consequences of creating another criminalization is, I think with the intent of maybe making Rochester less desirable to the homeless is not going to meet its desired result, or as my daughter just said, solve any problems. That's my, did you want to add it?
All right, thank you, Ms. Whitehorn. Okay, moving on to Scott Crutchman or Crutchman, remind me. Come on up. Please introduce yourself and you have four minutes, although please do keep it concise.
Of course. Good evening, council members, Council President Carlson. My name is Scott Crutchman. I'm a community organizer with Isaiah and I'm president at Ward 6. I acknowledge and respect the fact that homelessness is a complicated issue that needs to be addressed from multiple angles. And I appreciate the hard work that the city and RPD have put into drafting solutions. However, I firmly believe that prosecuting people experiencing homelessness is not a productive solution. The city's proposal forbids prosecution until violators have been informed of shelters and social services available to them. But these resources are currently spread very thin. As a gentleman from the landing pointed out, the warming shelters don't have enough beds to accommodate everyone who seeks them. I fear that RPD officers will end up trying to connect homeless campers with assistance resources that are either overburdened or inadequate, which will result in repeat violations of the ordinance and prosecution. Prosecution will leave people who are already at an economic disadvantage with criminal records that will make it more difficult for them to secure jobs and housing. Thus perpetuating, perpetrating the problems that caused them to be in their situation. Optimizing our city's assistance network must be our highest priority, not arresting and prosecuting people whose only crime is existing in spaces where the city doesn't want them. Unhoused people are not criminals. They deserve dignity and compassion, not vilification and shame. Our city has an opportunity to show its citizens what true compassion looks like. Let's not waste it. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Liz Bolden, please unmute yourself. If you're in Zoom, use the unmute if you're joining by phone, star six.
Thank you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, please introduce yourself and you have four minutes.
Thank you, Madam Council President. I appreciate the opportunity to comment on a proposed ordinance that will be before you all tonight. My name is Liz Bolden. I'm a Rochester resident in Ward 6 and I represent parts of Rochester, including all of the downtown as well as Orinoco, Orinoco Township, Cascade Township, and Haverhill Township in the Minnesota Senate. I believe that all of us here today, as well as the majority of our constituents, share the conviction that homelessness should be rare, brief, and one time. I recognize that we are all perhaps here tonight discussing a proposed ordinance because these ideals do not always pan out. In reality, many of those who are experiencing homelessness in our community have been trapped in cycles of poverty, homelessness, and despair for considerable amounts of time. As Vice Chair of the Senate Housing and Homelessness Prevention Committee, my colleagues and I take seriously our efforts to partner with local government to bring us toward a reality where homelessness truly is rare, brief, and one time. We made significant steps in the past legislative session to bolster emergency shelter capital and emergency services, strengthen housing vouchers and rental assistance, and expand transitional housing opportunities, among many other actions that I don't have time to expand on further tonight. And although this is just a start, there is much work left to be done. And these are significant achievements towards addressing systemic homelessness that are without parallel in Minnesota history. There is a problem to be solved here, however, but the ordinance under consideration is not a solution. It fails to make any meaningful contribution toward breaking cycles of homelessness. In fact, a strictly punitive approach to addressing chronic homelessness, which this ordinance as drafted appears to be, can only succeed in further cementing cycles of poverty and homelessness that many of our unhoused neighbors find themselves trapped in. As it stands today and despite the, our best efforts, existing services in our community fall short of meeting the needs of those experiencing homelessness, as has been mentioned by others. We should be laser focused on strengthening these services rather than criminalizing the mere existence and presence of those who are struggling most. The racial justice of this proposed ordinance are also worth noting. The DEI impact section of the Request for Action document on this proposal itself rightly states that people of color are disproportionately overrepresented in our unhoused population as well as within our criminal legal system. To be clear, implementing this policy will without question disproportionately impact people of color. While wealthy and powerful entities and individuals might like to see unhoused individuals erased from our community for their own convenience or profit motives, these attitudes and the proposed ordinance in front of us represent a complete abdication of the responsibilities entrusted to us by our constituents. We can and must do better and seriously commit to rolling up our sleeves and working together to break cycles of poverty, homelessness, and despair rather than further contributing to the problem. Many in this room and in the highest positions of power and influence in this community often speak to the ideal of Rochester as a welcoming and inclusive community for all. Let's back up those words with action. I strongly and emphatically oppose this ordinance and encourage you all to do the same and continue to work towards actual solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Bolden. Adam Busby.
Good evening, Council President, City Council members. Thank you, I'm here to talk about the ZIPS program and I do appreciate the conversation that I've had with a few of the council members here and one that I keep playing phone tag with. I do appreciate it, however, I do feel like it's, it's necessary to address in public what's going on. As you are aware, that this is a publicly funded and city approved program to help the disabled in our community. However, the disabled are getting left behind while two for profit companies continue to put money in their pocket. We have two dispatchers, is all the dispatchers they have on the ZIPS transportation side, both of whom are ready to quit their job because of the low pay. We have one that's making under $17 an hour and has been there for two years with no kind of substantial raise, 50 cents over two years, I believe. This is unacceptable. When the two dispatchers inevitably quit, this is going to take an already struggling system and cause further chaos because two companies want to put more money in their pocket and not care about those that they're trying to serve. And, and the city, Abner, it's Ab, boy, I'm having a problem with words today. Admirable that the city has this program for those, but we need folks to step up and fight for those that either don't have a voice or are unable to stand up for themselves or maybe this is not their gift in life to stand up for others. And me for one, I'm willing to fight that battle all day long. It's, it's inexcusable. It's unfair that we got two corporations making money refusing to give dispatchers a living wage and they're understaffed. They could do, do with at least one more dispatch staff. But it's just, I don't know, the system's broken. We need a remedy. So thank you very much for your time. I do appreciate you listening to me and thanks to those that have been communicating with me on this issue. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Busby. Representative Andy Smith. And just a note to my colleagues, we're already going to be over time with Representative Smith, so after he's completed like a motion to consider extending. Go ahead, Representative Smith, use the unmute button or star six.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, please introduce yourself, you have four minutes.
Excellent, thank you, sorry for the delay. I'm Representative Andy Smith. I serve in the House of Representatives for District 25B, which is the downtown area and some of the surrounding neighborhoods. I wanted to speak against the council considering an ordinance related to camping in the city public spaces. I know you're considering that tonight. And I do understand that to many people, including many sincere members of the council and city administration, that this does sound like a solution and I simply do not think that it is. In public policy discussions, we're encouraged not to use the term homelessness, but rather people experiencing homelessness. In fact, that's the term that's used in this ordinance. But I do think the distinction between these two perspectives is really critical and worth thinking on tonight at this meeting. Homelessness, as stated as such, is a middle class issue. It's the uncomfortable feeling that many of us with jobs or mortgages or families get when we see poverty or we see people experiencing mental health crises on the street or financial hardships or suffering from addiction or just a really bad run of luck. That feeling tells us it would be a whole lot more comfortable for us if those people went away. And I'm not trying to throw rocks from glass houses. I can admit that I have felt that at times. And I think when we admit that about ourselves, it'll help us find a better solution. But it's from that perspective that we think of solutions like this no camping ordinance or any other number of actions when really what they do is criminalize poverty. They do make us feel better for a moment, but they don't help the problem and in fact make it worse. But when we view this question from how to help people who are experiencing homelessness, it's a humanitarian question. People are not problems in themselves, they have problems. The problem is not the people who are camping, it's the factors that drive them to have to camp. And I'm, I'm a policymaker, I understand, I'm not naive, this is a very complex and tremendously difficult question, but criminalizing the tragedy of not having a warm bed is not the way forward and I would urge you as council members to reject this proposal. Thank you for listening and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Representative Smith. Okay, we're at 20 minutes, we have at least 11 people left.
I was gonna, again, we have four public hearings tonight that we want to get to, we're holding people up for that. I would propose that we extend our, suspend our rules and extend our public comment period 22 minutes and allow two minutes for each of the final speakers and ask that anyone who is repeating something cede their time so that we can get through some other, some other things.
Second.
Councilmember Keane, any further discussion?
Again, I looked at this and said, we've got four public hearings, we've got people signed up for that. I don't want to extend them out another 45 minutes or an hour for, just taking time away from them.
Member Dennis?
Yes, I would like to amend that motion and give everyone the full amount of four minutes each. That's our job here is to listen to constituents and residents who think they should have the full time.
Please don't speak during our meeting. All right, we are we are gonna vote on the motion that has been made. There wasn't a second. All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, moving on, Westland. So you have two minutes.
Thank you again for letting me talk and it's always a privilege to be able to speak because I know how much trouble I cause. Appreciate the police presence here to keep me safe tonight. And I, in light of the fact that we're short on time, why do we allow elected officials who have such a broad face in the public to, they have a bully pulpit at the state level? Why do we allow Liz Bolden to have four minutes? Why do we allow Andy Smith to have four minutes? This is our city council meeting. They don't even come here and they get Zoom meeting time from Heidi over here. So I just have to question that. I just think it's inappropriate. I'm also noticing that Mayor Norton's not here tonight. That's fine because this is the city council meeting, it's not the mayor's meeting and I want to talk more about that another night. But I wanted to draw attention to the odd fact that we have these nonprofits in Rochester, Minnesota, and I have the 990 documents of a tax exempt organization who wants us to pay more taxes, of course, and vote yes in tomorrow's referendum. From the 2021 documents of Isaiah Minnesota's own tax filings, they've received contributions and grants in the total of $3,599,224. They have assets on hand of $7,631,077? This is more money than any of us can hope to make in the rest of our lives. I find it interesting that nonprofit organizations would work so hard to go through the trouble of filing a 501(c)(3), I think that's the status of this particular organization, yes, 501(c)(3) tax exempt organization that encourage other people to have to pay more taxes or come to our city council meetings from other cities, from Minneapolis, right? From, from even Winona or Mankato, these people come. Can I have two minutes at the next city council meeting if I'm not going to get two more now?
We'll discuss as a council, thank you.
Times up.
Times up.
Time's up.
All right. All right, Mary Jo Majuris?
Good evening. My name is Mary Jo Majuris. I live in Eastside neighborhood. A few months ago, I was pretty much ignorant about the issue of homeless people in Rochester. I saw the tents along the bike path and out at Corey Hill and sometimes their belongings left in my neighborhood. But I hadn't ever taken the time to understand or get to know our neighbors who have no house to sleep in. Then the county decided to put an overnight shelter in my neighborhood and began to try to find out more about those neighbors who didn't have a house. I took a tour of the landing and spoke at length with Dan Fifefield about their work. A member of our neighborhood asked to be allowed on the mayor's task force about homelessness, but she denied that request. And in asking questions of the county, Eastside neighbors have been ignored and the county has refused to ask questions that we have about their plan to turn Roth into an overnight homeless shelter for up to three hundred people. From what I've learned, there are four task forces in our area trying to resolve the issue of our neighbors who are homeless. And of those task forces, not a single one is using the experience and knowledge that the landing has has to help find the best solution for our homeless neighbors. The landing, which has worked with this population for the last five years, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, ten hours a day. Why doesn't the city of Rochester take leadership on this issue and use the very valuable resource that we have in our community to solve this issue? Dan and Holly Fifefield have traveled to several different cities to see how successful solutions are operated. Solutions that don't remove the dignity of the homeless people and take into consideration their needs and issues. The solution that the county has proposed is a Band-Aid, not a permanent solution. Let's all work together to find a solution and let's use the best resource we have for finding the solution, the landing. I'm asking all of you as our leaders in Rochester to be the leaders in finding the best solution and helping our homeless neighbors. And whatever reason you have for not using the landing, please get over it.
Thank you, Ms. Majuris. Olivia Bergen?
Hello, Councilmember, Council President Carlson. I want to speak tonight about the draft camping ban ordinance that's been proposed. And first, I want to thank you for engaging with the faith leaders that I meet with regularly in the community. They've been following this issue, wanting to learn more about it. And I think pretty much all of you have spoken, either spoken with them by phone or come to meet with us. And I really appreciate you taking the time to do that. And that says a lot about your willingness to talk this challenging issue through with many in the community. I don't support the ordinance that's been proposed for a couple of reasons and I hope you'll consider them. And I hope that you'll talk about them during the discussion on this issue tonight. First, as has been mentioned, due to a lack of bed space, we don't have enough spaces for everyone who needs emergency shelter every night. And so I think for that reason, this ordinance is not fair or compassionate. Second, I understand and have heard some of the discussions that the police department and counselors have raised around negative interactions with a small set of people experiencing homelessness. But personally, I believe criminal activity that is actually harming people, crimes like assault, threats, harassment, exposure, should be the priority of our police department and absolutely demand a response. But criminalizing activity that's merely inconvenient for police or unattractive to neighbors is not a sufficient reason to harm people experiencing homelessness with onerous fines, with jail time, with a criminal record that makes it more difficult for them to advance. So thank you for considering my comments. Thank you for listening to me and I hope that you'll oppose this ordinance tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Bergen. Tony Mengsko. You remind me how to pronounce your name.
Sure. Tony K. Mansko. And I'm a resident of Rochester and I'd like to thank everyone for the time to speak today. I'd like to pose a question to our council members to think about. How many of you have been homeless? I have. My landlord was collecting my rent, not making her mortgage payments. At some point, a member of the Olmsted County Sheriff's Department showed up with eviction papers. I was in shock not knowing what I would do. I had two elementary school-aged children and wanted to keep them in school. Where would we go? We tried living with relatives and that didn't work out. I had a van that we had loaded up enough money, I had a van that we had loaded up and enough money for a cheap hotel for a few days. I didn't know what I was going to do after the money ran out. I was missing work trying to get some type of housing assistance. I had pulled my children again from another school. If necessary, I thought we could live in our van. It was the middle of winter, but that would be a final option while seeking housing assistance. My story isn't unique. So many families with kids in school are experiencing this situation like a family I worked with just recently, trying to find housing locally. Some are bouncing from staying with family or friends, renting a cheap hotel room, living in a car. Think of how all of this moving around can impact a child's education. I'm concerned because a proposed city ordinance criminalizes poverty. Let me say it again. It criminalizes poverty and places additional barriers around future employment and ability to access stable housing. The number of unsheltered people in our community is increasing and winter is coming. Please vote against the ordinance. Let's strive for providing stable housing, not strive to increase unsheltered residents being jailed, fined, having their vehicle impounded, or losing custody of their kids while the parent is in jail. How can you find somebody that already has no money? Where will that money come from? There are already so many barriers in front of people seeking stable, secure housing. Why add to these barriers by criminalizing poverty? Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Sather? Please introduce yourself. You have two minutes.
Sounds great. Good evening, city council members. Matthew Sather, I live in, I'm a resident of the Eastside neighborhood here, just across the river in downtown Rochester. Certainly, I agree with everyone who spoke about the proposed ordinance for the people who experience homelessness in the city of Rochester. Where I want to spend some of my time is, I know it's an idea proposed by the county, but the city's within the county. So I want to talk about the proposed idea of the Roth, the residence of Old Town Hall, you know, converting that into a homeless shelter. And primarily, I want to spend time talking about the possible inconvenience. This would be a twelve-hour facility. And just talking logistics about what this means for that, those individuals who are experiencing homelessness. Currently, that population of Rochester has the opportunity to stay at the landing during the day and then obviously the warming center right across the road at night. I think the proposed location really compromises that travel for that population where whether it's January, February, March, we're in our winter months. Those individuals, they have all their belongings. They potentially have their family are going to be making that journey from, again, the residence of Old Town Hall in the Eastside neighborhood to the landing. And I, as Mary Jo referenced, we certainly have the resources in Rochester. With the landing, they have the staff, they have the want, they have the experience where I do think you need to consider their expertise. And I know, again, this is the county, but look at that opportunity because I do think that further serves the individuals who are suffering from homelessness. And again, I do think we have the people in the right place to help. Thanks.
All right, Nathan Maholland? And thank you, everyone, for being so prompt. Please introduce yourself. You have two minutes.
Yeah, my name is Nathan Maholland. Thank you for giving me your time. I hope I'm at the right place. I got a letter in the mail saying that I should have any comments for the reconstruction that's going off on Broadway? The summer?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, G. Do I think?
It's G two?
Is this the right place?
Right moment of the meeting.
So I should come up later?
Yes, so G two for Nathan. All right.
Okay.
We'll call you back up. All right, Tiki Garcia? Ms. Garcia, are you speaking at a public hearing topic?
G four.
Good evening.
Okay.
Yeah.
President Carlson and city council representatives?
This is for G four.
F twenty-four. May I proceed?
Yep. Suppose.
I'm Tiki and I've been here before. In regards to phase one of the preserved development being approved tonight, the developer's path. First of all, we don't know there was a phase one and a phase two for the path. Does the path construction parallel the timeframe of the development phase one and phase two? What exactly is the path? Could it, how could it be outsourced when it was a county road wideaway on County Road Highway one twenty-five and adjacent to county land? Just last evening around dinnertime, a car left the road right where a sharp curve is at Mayo Wood Barn and struck a mature tree while spreading car debris and narrowly missing a wellhead for many households in the county neighborhood. Looking towards phase two, this appears to be the exact place where the developer's path will be. This is not the first time the vehicles have gone up the road at that location. Thank you for your attention to this life-impacting decision.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Sanjir Mishra? Please, Sanjeet.
Sanjeet.
Yes, please introduce yourself and you have two minutes.
Hello. Hi, council members, Council President Carlson. I'm just here to echo the sentiments against the proposed ordinance criminalizing so-called camping. I'm a medical student who is at the pleasure of working with and serving the unhoused population here in Rochester where I live. I and my classmates have learned some of the many manifold reasons that our neighbors end up unhoused. And as part of my role as a future physician, I have pledged to a moral code to do no harm and I believe this extends to speaking out against measures and policy that will create further harm. This measure will harm unhoused individuals, our patients, people whom we serve and treat. It's clear from the professional experiences and the service experiences of people in this room that, and plenty of research that we cannot criminalize our way out of the housing crisis. It is not a problem that could be solved by criminalization and incarceration. It will, criminalizing being unhoused will impede the abilities of these individuals to seek healthcare, housing resources and employment. So I don't have all the solutions, but in the absence of available resources that has been discussed here tonight, the solution is not to further compound the crisis with criminalization of merely being unhoused. Criminalizing an activity or individuals is a statement on the morality of those people or of those activities. In that light, I would suggest that this ordinance is immoral and a crime in spirit against unhoused people and should be opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mishra. Excuse me, Dr. Mishra. Christine Loeffler?
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Madam President. My name is Christine Loeffler. I'm a resident of northeast Rochester and I'm here in support of all the many people who have spoken about opposing the criminalization of the camping ordinance that you are considering tonight. I'm also here on behalf of my family to oppose the county's plan to change the use of the residences of Old Town Hall to an overnight-only homeless shelter. Our neighborhood only heard about this decision on Sunday, September tenth, two days before Okra's big media reveal on September twelfth. On the fourteenth, David Dunn made a presentation to a crowded Eastside neighbors' meeting, but had no ready answers for any of the questions about how this location was chosen over any other and why this was the first time anyone in the neighborhood had heard about it. Okra has made the decision to and applied for a ten million dollar grant to purchase and rehab the building to this new use without speaking to anyone in the neighborhood, not even our city councilperson. They did not contact the Boys and Girls Club just a few blocks away, the staff at Oakwood Cemetery located just behind the building. And they apparently didn't discuss the matter with the Rochester Police Department and have apparently also organized, excuse me, ignored all comments and advice from any of the groups currently working with the homeless such as the landing. Anyone who has listened to these presentations from those in Rochester who actually work with the homeless know that what is needed is a twenty-four-hour shelter at a location with needed services readily available. Not a place that requires people to literally pack up everything they have and move over half a mile every twelve hours in any kind of weather. Non-board members of the Eastside Neighborhood Association have filed freedom of information requests for information about what is in their grant application.
Time to wrap up.
Okay. We ask the city council to speak up on behalf of and protect the Eastside neighborhood from the county board's determination to put and to drop an overnight-only homeless shelter into the midst of a residential neighborhood, many blocks.
Thank you, Ms. Loeffler. Pastime. Thank you.
Resources.
No, thanks. Kathy Harold? I am not. Oh, okay. All right, Steve Borkart? Please introduce yourself. You have two minutes.
President Carlson, council. I'm here to speak on behalf and in favor of the ordinance against camping in the parks. Because the current situation is not at all sustainable. It's not compassionate. It's not humane. I will agree with the people who have spoken against the ordinance in the, in for so far as we need more resources in the community. But without this backstop as a tool for the police chief, many people, numerous people, will not avail of themselves of the increased capacity that had been proposed here. Number two, I've heard a lot of fear about criminalizing. Criminalizing this is a good thing. Arrest is a good thing. It's a portal to the system. Let me tell you a little story. Back in the seventies, we didn't arrest drunk drivers and we didn't arrest domestic abusers. Then the mad moms got on their high horse in about nineteen eighty and said, you cops aren't doing your job. Arrest these people. And then the domestic abuse advocates came forward and said, you guys aren't doing your job. You're leaving abusers in the household. We had all the same reasons. We didn't want to criminalize a human problem. We didn't want to take the breadwinner out of the home. We didn't want to leave children without the money to buy groceries. So we left the abuser on the home. They said, no, 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 arrest them. Put them in the system so we can force them into programs. And it worked. The next people in line were the crim sex advocates because we weren't arresting rapers, criminals who rape people like we should have been. We changed the way we did business. Arrest was the tool. Your police chief will not run around arresting people willy-nilly. This is a tool in their toolbox. They will exhaust every other option they have available to them before they rely on arrest. But if they can't arrest, they have no value. If you take no action tonight, this is indeed an action. You will be telling everybody that it's okay to come to Rochester and camp in tents and die in tents in our parks.
Thank you, Mr. Borkart. All right, John Wade?
Evening, Council President Carlson. My name is John Wade. I live in downtown Rochester. I am here only to talk about a particular issue not related to my day job. Just want to say that I'm very supportive of this ordinance. I know it's controversial. I applaud the efforts of the landing and a number of other, the Salvation Army and everything the county and city, everybody's trying to do. But I really believe that it is not passionate and contrary to what we heard, I do, I believe in no way it is caring for our fellow human beings to leave them three fires, three deaths because we don't house them. I am not saying we shouldn't spend more money. Let's figure that one out to add more support. But this is very, very important to people, to get people out of those terribly dangerous situations that they are in. I believe very strongly in this. I very much appreciate your compassion on this issue. And if we think it's compassionate, listen, if I am ever out in one of those parks camped, pass the ordinance. Get me the help I need. So I am not sitting out in that park tonight or under a bridge. Arrest me and get me the care that I need. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for keeping your comments concise and for sharing your passion. I definitely heard all different perspectives and it really matters to hear your voice. So thank you. All right, with that, we will close the open comment period and officially call the meeting to order. Clerk Geisler, please call the roll. Councilmember Keane?
Here.
Councilmember Bransford?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick is absent. Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Dennis?
Here.
Council President Carlson?
Council President Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Norton is absent.
All right, thank you. Uh, I will turn it over to City Administrator Alison Zalms for her report.
Councilmember President, can I have a point of order, uh, or inquiry? Is the transcription service, I, I've noticed is not on the screen or the screen for those who are hard of hearing or, um, that's a correct word, transcription. I, I did not see it during open comment and I just wanted to see if that is availability for accessibility for other residents.
Sure. Clerk, any word on that? All right. Thanks for calling that to our attention. Go ahead, City Administrator Zalms.
Uh, thank you, Council President, council members, members of the public. Um, we always start off the report by thanking our teammates for acting with respect, integrity, safety and excellence in all that they do. Appreciate those that are here tonight and those who might be watching, uh, from home or have contributed to, um, the policy items in the packet in some way. Also wanted to congratulate our own city clerk, Kelly Geisler, who, um, has been certified, um, as a certified municipal clerk. Um, this actually takes a significant amount of work in order to achieve, um, a significant amount of backwork, educational requirements, contributions to local government and, um, certified, uh, through the, uh, International Institute of Municipal Clerks. So thank you uh, for your efforts to do that and for your service to the city of Rochester. Also wanted to remind folks that, um, tomorrow is election day. Polling places will be open from seven AM to eight PM. Um, so you can find your local polling place at pollfinder.sos.state.mn.us or you can go to our website forward slash vote and find information about that. There is same-day voter registration available in Minnesota, so, um, if you were to go to the polls and not yet be registered, you need to bring information, um, such as a driver's license, something of that nature and, um, and, and be able to provide that in order to register on the spot and be able to still vote the same day. Um, and then just wanted to acknowledge that on Saturday, November eleventh, uh, we will be having a Rochester Civic Music, uh, Bara Syourage. And so we'll have honor squires from southeast Minnesota. Tickets are on sale, um, at Rochester Civic Music. You can call five oh seven three two eight twenty-two hundred. Um, or head over to the box office on Monday through Friday, eight AM to noon and one to five PM. Um, that's at the Rochester Civic Music Office in City Hall. So also we will have, um, cart services, communication access, real-time translation available at that. So people want to check that out. Head on over or find our website and go to the Civic Music section, seven thirty PM, November eleventh. And finally, I just want to acknowledge that we will be closed, um, although many of our partners in public safety will still be working. Thank you. Um, on November tenth, Friday, in recognition of Veterans Day, um, really appreciate all those, um, veterans in the community or those, um, actively serving. Um, we do have over a hundred city employees also that are either veterans or actively serving, um, our country. So just thank you for that. And a reminder that we'll be closed on Friday for most services. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Administrator Zalms. As we know, Mayor Norton is gone. I just wanted to remind everyone, as she always does, that there are several openings on our boards and commissions that she is trying to fill ahead of twenty twenty-four. So encourage you to go to the website and share, uh, with others to apply if you have interest in serving the community. All right, we are moving on to approving the order of the agenda. Staff did send one update, uh, updated set of documents related to F twenty. Hopefully all of you saw those related to the contracts with Enterprise Fleet Management for lease of police vehicles. But otherwise, I don't believe there are any other changes, so I'd invite a motion.
I, I'd move approval, uh, noting, uh, the, the update to F twenty. Second.
All right. Any discussion? Councilmember Keen.
Nothing to add.
Any other discussion? Right. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, Councilmember Dennis has pulled items F ten, twenty-four and twenty-five. These will be discussed under reports and recommendations. Is there anything I'm missing?
Um, with the, um, Councilmember President, with the, uh, information that we just were presented that there is a change in F twenty, I think it would be good to pull that one as well, just so the public would have that information that we received via email. I'd like to also pull F twenty. Thank you.
All right, uh, anything else? Otherwise, I'd invite a motion to approve in block F one through nine, F eleven through nineteen, F twenty-one through twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
All right, Councilmember Keen, any discussion?
Nothing to add.
All right. Uh, I just wanted to say that there are actually some really wonderful things on this consent agenda and to acknowledge that the staff do a ton of work to get us to this spot where we can very easily approve. So just really quick call out to that we are moving forward a contract for our three-one-one, which will make city services more accessible. We are, um, adopting a new way of assigning PTO, which is a more inclusive way of doing that. And we have a new building and maintenance apprenticeship program and all, these are all examples of living our social equity foundational principles. So even though we don't talk in depth about those, it's really exciting to see those moving forward. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Okay, we will move on to our public hearings. We have four tonight, so I always take a second to go over the process for the public hearings. So we start with a staff introduction and then we invite the applicant or representative of the applicant to present for up to ten minutes. We open the public hearing. Uh, members of the public can comment for up to five minutes. Always with the encouragement that you keep your comments brief and concise. Close the public hearing. The applicant has a chance to provide a rebuttal for up to five minutes. Then we invite council colleagues to ask any clarifying questions of the applicant and staff before we have a motion discussion and vote. So we will start with, uh, G one, which is the reconstruction of Willow Court Southwest from Fortieth Street Southwest to the end of the cul-de-sac. And we don't have an applicant in this case, but Mr. Dombrowski, you're here to introduce the item.
Yeah, good evening, Council President, members of the council. Uh, I'm gonna just outline the process for these first two public hearings. They're both, uh, part of our special assessment process, so. We, as you recall, a month ago, uh, you set, scheduled this first hearing. This is part of the progression of public hearings that happened during the special assessment project, process per the state statute. So you adopted the feasibility report and ordered this first hearing. And so tonight we'll be here on each of these two projects. We'll be asking for four action items. Ordering the project to occur essentially, ordering the preparation of plans that we will then use for bidding at a later date. Adopting a resolution that will set the assessment hearing for January eighth, twenty twenty-four. And then ordering our team to prepare the assessment role that we will bring to that meeting, which will have each individual, um, number to, to be assessed to each property. After, if, if everything's approved tonight, we will mail out letters notifying each property owner of the dollar mount for their specific property as well as the date and time of the hearing, as well as the publishing and of the notice in the post-bolt and everything else that we need to do as part of the process. So the first project, G one, is Willow Court Southwest. It is a full reconstruction of a cul-de-sac in southwest Rochester. The total project cost is seven hundred, seven hundred four thousand dollars, um, and change and as part of the policy that the council adopted last year, we only take the roadway items, so the curb, the pavement, the, the aggregate base beneath the roadway and the grading that has to occur. We then take twenty-five percent of that number and spread those costs out based on property valuation. So the total that will be assessed on this project is ninety-two thousand six hundred and twelve dollars. So with that, I will, uh, pause for you to open the hearing and then prepare to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. We will open the public hearing and I don't have anybody signed up for item G one, but would anybody like to speak on this item? All right. And if you're joining virtually, use the raise hand function or press star nine. Okay, uh, Tom Metzger, are you wanting to speak on item G one? And please go ahead and introduce yourself if that is the case. We can't hear you. It does look like you're unmuted. Any advice, clerk? Okay. Mr. Metzger, if you want to try it again.
Council President, if I may, I would also note that if you do approve this, there is a second public hearing that's part of the approval process that's scheduled for January eighth that would provide another opportunity for the person.
Sure. So, Mr. Metzger, this will not be the only opportunity for you to speak on this item if we are not able to make the technology work in our favor. And it's not looking like we are, so I'm going to move on. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Try one more time. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing and see if there are any questions for staff. Councilmember Wall.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Dombrowski, uh, you say you prepare the letters once the council has approved uh, and people get their, uh, assessment notices. Is that a surprise to them or what kind of, uh, advance information do they have that this, uh, uh, kind of greeting will be in the mail for them?
We've notified the, the neighborhood for this specific project of the project that will be occurring. For the next one, we've had multiple, that's a little bit larger project where we've had multiple open houses, but they definitely know about the project. They know that we intend to use special assessments. We inform people of that and they know that there will be a number to come later.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Councilmember Palmer.
Um, on the motion, do we need to do this all four separate or can we bunch all four together?
You, you can approve them all four in block.
Okay.
Right. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval for the four actions requested. Second.
All right, Councilmember Keen, any?
No, this is, again, this is a, a Ward one, smaller neighborhood street. Um, and this is a new assessment process, uh, from about three years ago. And again, I, um, expecting it'll go well.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, back to you, Mr. Dombrowski for item G two, which is the reconstruction of Broadway Avenue North from Fourteenth Street Northeast to Elton Hills Drive Northwest.
All right. Thank you, Council President, members of the council. Uh, this next, uh, project is the North Broadway Reconstruction Project from the, the dam up to the rec center. Uh, again, you, you approve the feasibility report and set the project hearing tonight and what we have before you are the same four actions as the previous, uh, hearing. This project, the estimated cost is just over fifteen million dollars of which, when we do the calculations, nine hundred ninety-nine thousand three hundred sixty-four dollars and nine cents will be, um, collected via special assessment. So if approved tonight, we will again notify all the property owners along this project corridor and their individual assessment amounts, inviting them if they wish to speak, uh, at the hearing in January, on January eighth, twenty twenty-four.
All right. So I'll open the public hearing and I did have Nathan Maholland, who was patiently waiting. Come on up. This is the item you wanted to speak on, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. So you have up to five minutes. Thank you.
Won't be that long. Well, thank you for taking this. Um, I, last August of twenty twenty-two, we were notified that they'd be doing this project and they had a meeting at the one twenty-five live. It's up there on the map. So we looked at it and I just want an answer to a question I'd had and asked a few times. And that is, I have a, uh, driveway with a detached crew car garage and they took that off when they did that. So I live on Broadway sixteen thirty-one, First Avenue Northeast. And I pull off a Broadway up my driveway to get into my two-car detached garage and that was gone when that project was done. So my question would be for, I don't know if this is the right place or not, but I got the letter is how am I gonna get my garage? I mean, that kind of, then I have a shed. I have no way to get into it or pull into it. So that would be my question. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Who would like to speak on the North Broadway item G two? Is there anyone joining virtually who would like to speak? Use the raise hand function or press star nine. All right. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And, Mr. Dombrowski, did you want to respond to that question or do you have a response?
Yeah, yeah, I apologize if there was confusion and we made it appear that we were not providing that access, but the driveway along North Broadway will remain with our project, so you can have that access. It, it will be there. It is in the plans we're, you know, that we've been working on, so, um, I can confirm it's there.
Okay, thank you for that. If you have any additional questions, please reach out. All right, Mr. Palmer.
Um, one question in, in, in past discussions we've had on Fourteenth Street Northeast, um, that crossing from Broadway will be made safer. Is that correct?
Correct. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions of staff? Councilmember Wall.
So this question is a little bit more focused, but much like my last one. Uh, some of the numbers in this one are a lot bigger. Do, do the property owners have some notion of, uh, the amount that they might be assessed?
Uh, there have, we did have preliminary numbers that we, we shared if people had questions when we had one of the chamber meetings. Then the, and at that point in time, we were actually a little bit higher than we're at now, so that they're gonna be reduced. Some of the feedback we heard was interesting because one of the property owners was on a previous project. They were expecting them to be higher. With the new policy, it's really lowered the, the amounts that we're assessing that, that go towards this, uh, revenue source. So they will see now the updated official numbers in the notice that we mail out, uh, but some have asked and we've shared that with them.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions? Councilmember Dennis.
All right, thank you. I know I've asked this question before about, um, the construction work being done more during the summer because of the Kellogg Middle School. A lot of people from Ward six, uh, the students will cross there. Just, just to, um, clarify, will there be a large, a good island for children, uh, youth to be able to have safety between crossing? I, I see now that with people driving distracted, you know, turning, um, on Broadway on Elton Hills, just wanted to, is that something that is gonna be an improvement when finished?
Yeah, so along the corridor, we do have, um, with the geometric layout that the, the council looked at and approved with the feasibility report, we have median islands. We don't set up our signal, at our signalized crossings, we don't set them up such that up an individual can only get halfway across. So they are set up, so they're timed. You can get all the way across, but we know that some people tend to try to leak out late and, and cross late, so they do have that refuge, um, in the center. Uh, but we do program and time our signal systems such that they can cross the entire intersection in one movement.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve project number J seven three four one.
I'll second.
All right, Councilmember Palmer, you have the floor.
No, enough has been said. Thank you.
Just to clarify that it's the four, the four actions as part of the projects.
Yep.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to item G three, which is the conditional use permit amendment number C D twenty twenty-three zero zero three C U P A by DM Companies. And Desmond, Mr. McGee, we have you kicking us off. Go ahead.
That's correct. Thank you very much, uh, President Carlson and, um, members of the council. Good evening. My name is Desmond McGee. I'm with the Community Development Department. I'll be bringing in this application tonight. Uh, the subject site is point seven six acres in size and it consists of four parcels located at the southwest corner from Sixth Avenue, South, Southwest and Second Street, Southwest. This is the third iteration of the CityWalk project. Uh, the current approved plan consists of six stories, uh, with a hundred and forty-two units. Uh, the requested C U P amendment consists of twelve stories with a hundred and, with three hundred and sixty-one units. Uh, the subject site is located in a R four zoning district, which is high-density residential uh, and meets all the zoning set, development standards except for where they received previous modifications in earlier C U Ps uh, for, uh, project setback reductions and sign size. Uh, in October of this year, uh, the Planning Commission approved, uh, a modification that allowed them an, an additional ten feet to be added to the developments. So it will be a hundred and twenty-five feet. The C U P amendment request, uh, preserves the grade, uh, level experience and quality and design aesthetics of the currently approved plan. Uh, those elements can be found on page one of your, uh, council RCA. Uh, Planning Commission and staff, uh, recommend approval of this application as it meets, uh, the design requirements of the UDC and also the DMC guidelines. It's consistent with the development in the downtown core area. Uh, and it is consistent with the twenty twenty Todd Study by adding residential density on Second Street Southwest, which will help facilitate additional link ridership, um, which will help facilitate additional link ridership along 2nd Street. Planning Commission and staff recommend a total of six conditions of approval. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission, the council has at this point or after public hearing.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. McGee. The applicant or representative of the applicant like to speak? Come on up.
All right, Madam President Carlson, members of the council, my name is Logan Joseph with Wood Seth, representing DM Companies. We also have MDG Architects here, who is the lead architect as well. I do have a presentation I'd like to share, just real brief if I could. So if I could share my screen.
Hopefully.
I'm not seeing the option to be able to share.
I mean, technology usually goes our way, so. I could see it for a second.
All right, I think we're good.
Got it.
Already did the introductions, so I'm gonna go right into it here, but as Desmond mentioned, we have a previous approval when it was the CDC Residential Zoning District as part of the original land development manual. If you all remember, there was an incentive development process and through that process, we were allowed six stories, 142 units, underground parking, pool and amenity. We also included demolition of 219 6th Avenue Southwest, which was determined not to be historic by the HPC, which is the Historic Preservation Committee, on two occasions, April of 2022 and August of 2023. Part of this previously approved project was to redesign 6th Avenue and 2nd Street Southwest and also included a rain garden, a waterfall feature terrace and courtyard area. So what's changed? City of Rochester changed the Central Development, Central Development Core Residential District citywide to the R4 High-Density Residential Zoning District. The R4 Zoning District allows a height of 115, as Desmond alluded to, with the opportunity to go to another 10 feet in height through the major modification process, which was approved by the Planning Commission on October 11th. Supply chain and material costs fluctuated, interest rates continued to rise, inflation, threat of market instability, all the things that you guys have heard, I'm sure, many times. Then Mayo Clinic comes along and they announce a $4.4 billion investment to the area, just kitty-corner to CityWalk. I've got the article from Post Bulletin up in the left-hand corner there, just as a site plan that shows where that project will take place and where the red square, obviously labeled as CityWalk Apartments. We've met with DMC, they've expressed excitement and support for this project. They don't typically put a letter together for projects like this, but we have got their verbal support. We also held a neighborhood meeting, which was part of the requirement, which ultimately led to removing those at-grade units and extending that glass down to the street for more of a storefront feel. So what's proposed, as you know, a 12-story, 125-foot, 361-unit urban development. We're also proposing 25% short-term rentals. It's the same building footprint, underground parking, pool, same amenity spaces with increased glazing, pocket plaza area, benches, outdoor public seating. But really what it does is it interacts with pedestrian experience and the pulse of the city that the city's policies and development really encourages for this area. We're still reconstructing 6th Avenue and 2nd Street Southwest and still includes a sculptured rain garden, waterfall terrace and courtyard. And really is a building that we intend to be cohesive with, with the neighborhood now and in the future. There's currently a six-story hotel across 2nd Street. There's a 13-story condo just to the east. There's an existing 19-story clinic. We also have the Bus Rapid Transit system right across the street, which is a major hub for pedestrian pickup and we have a proposed new large multi-story clinic, just kitty-corner. Additionally, my client owns property to the south and property to the west that currently has seven affordable units. The rents are somewhere between $650 and $750 a month and I think that really ties into what we heard earlier today on the open comment period. This is important to my client because of the, because we're asking for the height so that we don't have to displace those people. Otherwise, we have to go wider to make it more affordable. So rather than displacing the people and the affordable units by going wider, we ask to go higher. And we have that approval, which was a unanimous approval by the Planning Commission to go to 125 feet on October 11th, 2023. Before I go any further too, I want to just say that my client, DM Companies, actually has a lot of epic projects here in town. You're probably familiar with them, Riverwalk over by the Canadian Honker, the Hugh on Broadway and then the Red 44 just across the river from, from the mall. So they're already invested in this community and they do all their own management as well. So they take pride in their projects for sure. So we're here tonight to ask for your support and approval of an amendment to an already approved incentive development conditional use permit. The heights already been improved to 125 feet. The only items that we can't do by right in the R4 zoning district are the proposed setbacks and signage that Desmond alluded to. This is an example of what we're asking for. The R4 got cut off there, but it's in the middle column. You go 15 feet, we're asking six. You can go seven for the side street side yard on the east. We ask for 4.1. In the rear, you can go 15. We ask for 9.3 and you can't have a projected sign in the R4. We're asking for 81 square feet. This was all part of the previous approval. It was about a year and a half process of back and forth and working with staff, which I say has been a great, great experience both with public works and community development and we really feel, and DMC, and we really feel like this is a product that City of Rochester can be proud of. So as a matter of process, respect to the time that staff, DMC and our design team has put into this iconic project, we're okay with the six recommended staff conditions. And I understand as of 2 o'clock today, there's a citizen petition that came forward and I'd like to just address that now if I have time.
Yeah.
Okay. With EQB or the Environmental Quality Board, when starting a petition for environmental review, it's important to understand the following key points about the process. The purpose of an environmental review is not to cease projects. The Environmental Quality Board is not empowered to supersede or overrule local government or state agency decisions. We're here tonight to ask for your support and approval for an amendment to an already approved incentive development conditional use permit. The height's already been approved to 125 feet. The only items that we can't do by right, again, within the R4 are the proposed setbacks and signage, which are already approved in 2022. That's it, I'm here to answer questions.
All right, so we'll do the public hearing and then you'll have a chance.
All right.
So we will open the public hearing and John Kriesel is first.
Madam President, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Got a few questions here and I did want to make a request that maybe after some of the responses to some of my questions, if I'd have an opportunity to rebut or ask any other questions, but I, listening to the criteria, I'm not so sure that I'm gonna have that opportunity because there's gonna be some new things and I'm be bringing up here. First question that comes to my mind is why this project received this amount of money for this particular project? As I understand it, the criteria set forth for deed money was revitalization of properties or organizations within the DMC district. Also to work with disabled businesses and property owners and disadvantaged businesses, enabling businesses to strengthen and diversify their products and services. We wanted to make sure this process is fair and equitable as possible to help the organizations in greatest need. So it's rather confusing to me that this money would be granted to such a project and as I understand, it's referred to as being in the DMC particular district. But I think that the, the policies that were used to present this money by the Mayo Clinic and that is DMC, I think is inappropriate. Will this project be LEED certified? Will interrupters, and this is something I haven't heard of yet, will interrupters be utilized to keep mud, sand, salts, antifreeze, oil, inflammable fluids from sanitary drains or storm drains? This has three floors of underground parking. Cars carry with them debris that is not safe to discharge into storm sewers or sanitary sewers. So I, I asked staff if there's going to be an interrupter that's gonna be required here. Now, a little bit earlier, there was an announcement made that the Mayo Clinic is going to be doing a $4.4 billion just to the north. All the more reason, I think, to have an environmental study. Put your action tonight on hold because what's happening here is going to also be impacted by what the Mayo Clinic is going to be doing in this fight, during their five-year proposal that they just recently gave to you. It's going to be impacted by wind. It's gonna be impacted by birds. Are there going to be any other factors that, that, I mean, I'm gonna say that we need to be proactive, not reactive. We need to have an impact study to understand what the ramifications of this project joined to the project to the north will be, rather than react to it once it's already up. I'm very concerned about the environment. In my opinion, I think almost everybody in the state and maybe in the nation now realizes that the regulations put forth by EPA or the MPC has fallen short. We all hear about water issues, water problems. There is no safe water even upstream now. So I think I'm gonna say that this should be put on hold until there is a impact study that takes place as to how will the water be affected, how will the air, the particulate area be handled there? With the underground housing, there's constant, excuse me, underground parking, there is constant ventilation of getting rid of the fumes that are within, held within those areas. Now, this interrupter that I brought up, that collects what falls off the vehicle and where does it go? Is it gonna be scheduled to go into a sanitary sewer or a storm sewer? Here again, I would say that we wanna know how the community is gonna be impacted, so we don't have to react later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kriesel. I see somebody joining virtually has their hand up, Don DiHanson. You can unmute yourself if you're on Zoom or star six if you're joining by phone. Go ahead.
First of all, I echo all the comments that were just made. And I also have concerns about whether the, I guess, the $500,000, the half million dollars, if I'm understanding correctly from Destination Medical Center, is being spent within the spirit of what it's supposed to be spent. I'd also like to say my name is Don Di, D-O-N-D-I-H-A-N-S-O-N and you can reach me at that same at gmail.com. I am starting a Chums of Rochester organization. It's becoming apparently clear that speaking at public meetings has zero value and legal action does. I've already got $8,000 pledged to help fight this project and if you're interested in contacting me, please do.
All right, thank you. Barry Skolnick.
Hi, thank you. It's nice seeing you again, Brooke and everybody else, even you, Sean. Anyway, but I, what I wanted to mention.
You have a name?
Well, they already gave my name. They said.
You need to say yourself.
Maybe you weren't listening. Anyway, they did mention my name. Anyway, I really want what's best for Rochester, not only what's the minimal legal requirements. And I find very often, we, we react to developers by saying, does it meet the letter of the law? And without doing the best we can. The problem I have with, with this development and the people in the, who are on the development staff have been very nice and very friendly and cooperative, but the problem I have with it is, first of all, they mentioned the Heffron House. The Heffron House, which is now being demolished in order to make way for this building, has lower-income apartments in it. And even though the HPC had ruled by a three-to-three vote that they didn't want to pursue it because of the, and the main reason was really, if you went to the meetings, was mainly that they, the development was already in progress. So they were concerned about getting involved in that without getting the owner in hearings and stuff like that. So it was more of a procedural thing than the building wasn't historic. Just to make it clear, Mr. Heffron, who originally built the Heffron House, was the architect for St. Mary's Hospital, which is one of our most famous buildings in Rochester. He built the Chateau Theater and he built St. Mary's Cathedral. Plus, he was mayor of Rochester and also president of the city council. So there's a lot of history to him. What he did in that house, I don't know. What did George Washington do in Mount Vernon? I mean, who knows? But I'm just saying, he was a very famous person. And it was one of the first rooming houses type buildings that was built in the 1920s. If you look at the Sanborn maps, there hasn't been any changes to that building since then. So the building hasn't really been changed. I would rather that we kept the lower-income apartments there and instead I would urge that he, that the developer build a building he's building, maybe it's six stories, but merge it with the other building he owns on 2nd Street, which is supposed to be the corridor for taller buildings. And so I would rather they built that as a multi-income project where you could really have true equity. This building isn't true equity. It's for the, it's for the rich, basically, which is okay. But I'm just saying, on that block, they could have done it. They could have left the Heffron House alone rather than throwing then to those tenants out and it's a probably more expensive apartments they're gonna have to do now and then combine it with the building that they already own next to it and then they could have had a multi-income project. That to me was what the, what we should have done here in Rochester, not just build one deluxe building after another. I just think it's wrong. I don't think it meets the goals of equity in Rochester. And I would rather save the Heffron House and again, build the rest of it. I also would ask you to ask the people, like, what happens to the tenants of that house now? Are they gonna be taken care of? Or at the same rent levels or what's, what is gonna happen to them? So I'm very concerned because I really would have preferred a more diverse, since they already had some middle-income projects or lower-income projects next to the building. I'd rather merge them, merge them a little taller, build and then you could have had a better project overall and what would have been better for the community rather than this. And this, it's not bad for the community what they're trying to do, having a building there, but it could have been done better than what they're doing now. So I wanna do the best for Rochester, not just the minimal. Anyway, that's my belief.
All right, thank you, Mr. Skolnick. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on item G3? And again, one more call out. If you're joining virtually, use the raise hand function or press star nine. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and invite the applicant back up to respond to any of the comments and you have five minutes to do so.
Logan Joseph with Seth, representing DM Companies. I'll just make it quick. The money that was received for the DMC approval was for the pocket park and the redesign of 2nd Street and 6th Avenue. We've made that pretty clear in our presentation and all along, especially initially with this process. That's all area outside of the property line. So that's an expense that the developer is taking on himself. There was a process for somebody to go forward to the DMC and ask for money. They have a separate board that makes that decision. They decided to award $500,000 for this project. So that's my answer to that. I'm not, again, I'm not understanding what the, the threat of a lawsuit is, not really understanding that at all just because we're following the rules and the policies given to us by the City of Rochester. And I already addressed various comments about the Heffron House. It's already gone in front of the Historic Preservation Committee two different times and they've denied it both times.
Can you stay up? Because I think we'll probably have some questions. So shifting into questions of staff and the applicant. I guess I would just start the conversation off by, we know that we do have these massive projects about to unfold here, including Rapid Transit and the Bold Ford Unbound, should it be approved this week? So can you just talk to me or maybe staff can help with this and how those conversations will happen to coordinate construction and traffic concerns, all the things we're usually thinking about, but in a very consolidated space?
Sure, so I'm gonna. Sure. So I'm going to probably turn it over to Dylan. There's a traffic plan that we have to work with the city of public, you know, the Public Works Department to figure out all these different logistics. That's part of the development phase of this.
Sure. And it may be a little premature, but.
Yeah. No, council president, members of the council, that's a great question. This project, private development, they will have to apply for permits for work in our right of way. We've recently, in the last couple of years, changed our right of way policy such that we're charging per, by the square foot, the amount of space they're taking up. So as part of that review process, we're looking at their traffic control plan, their phasing, their staging. Also thinking about all the other products we have going on as we're coordinating internally on our own projects. And so that's a great question. Well, when we're writing our public projects, we always note any neighboring construction projects and there's a clause, you know, that's referring to coordination amongst contractors that will go into our projects. So they all need to work together and our right of way team does a great job, you know, managing all those different pieces of the puzzle as we're getting different permits and updating our, you know, mapping for the community. So they're aware of the impacts. So we would work closely with the team, the consultant team and the contractor.
Okay, with an eye to minimizing impact. Okay. Thank you for that. Other questions? Councilmember Walden Palmer?
I understand that the proposed project comes just short of the threshold of requiring an environmental impact study. If this were to have reached that threshold, what would an environmental impact study provide for the council that would make this a good or better project for Rochester?
I can take that one, councilmember Walden. Yeah, as you point out, this does fall short of the threshold. So the EAW is not required here. Keep in mind that an EAW is really intended to provide basic facts about a development, not necessarily intended to approve or deny a development. It's really intended to make sure we're analyzing the project properly. Some of the things that an EAW would require that we already require, but many cities do not, is traffic impact on every project, reviewing the impact of the traffic and what that might have on our system. We already require that and we've reviewed it likewise with things like stormwater management, like Mr. Kriesel brought up as well. Those are all things that we already review and require that would just be pulled out through the EAW process. In my opinion, I don't think the EAW process will bring out anything that we don't already know about the project and it will add significant cost.
Thank you.
Councilmember Palmer?
I got two questions. One of them is, is Mr. Kriesel mentioned the interceptor for the garage underneath. You're just going to build it to the state building code, which would require that, is that? Okay. Second thing would be, in your side, you had 70 affordable apartments that are around this that they own. Are they in a state program or a county program?
I believe they're on a county program. Clark, are they on the east side? On the, the one on the east, is it any program? No. Okay. Sorry. It's not in part of any program.
Okay, thank you.
All right, councilmember Keen?
This is question just on, well, I guess, I don't know who can take it, but 360 units and then 25% short term. When people are moving in and out of there, do you have space in your parking or something? Where do people move in and out from?
Yeah. So if you look at the site plan, actually, that's on the screen right now, we're actually constructing a bypass lane, a loading, a loading area. So that would be, you know, realistically where somebody would pull in and unload and load up their vehicle if they're moving off street.
So there's no, there's no public space. You're not using the public street for that?
No. Well, it's part of the right of way, but it's part of the improvement of Sixth Avenue that we're proposing as part of this project.
Yeah, you could see it.
I don't know if you can see it. I don't have any way to.
Yeah. All right. All right. But again, it's considered and it's in the plan.
It's considered what?
It's considered already. There's not, I mean, these things come up after the fact sometimes that we need to now start blocking off.
Oh, yeah. This was definitely considered. Working with Public Works and Community Development.
And how much, do you, what is the, is there like a formula for saying 360 units times 25% short term, that how much space you need for this?
Yeah. So there's an IT manual that we, ITE manual that civil engineers use to determine, you know, how many, what the impact is going to be on the public right of way. And so we provide that information to the city. The public works responds to that. So we've got a waiver, traffic impact study waiver, because we are underneath that threshold. And there's already been a study that's been done on Second Street.
Okay. Second unrelated question, but you point out that there's a lot of private and public projects planned for this area between the next five years. Do you foresee, I mean, is that something that we're way too early to be stacking them and deciding when they're happening? But is that something you're prepared for?
Well, the hope would be that we'd get this in the ground as soon as possible because there's going to be a lot of workers that are going to need a place to live while they're working on Mayo's project. So the intent would be one of the first projects in, so that we can accommodate some of that. But obviously we work with staff to figure that out.
And so Public Works, do you have any comment on that about how the, like, the ordering of the projects that these, these should be right now as best you would understand? This one would, I mean, I don't know where the finances come on these things, if this is really planned or we've got a lot of things that have gone into stall as the interest rates have gone up. So.
Yeah, I guess I wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily design their schedule or how they're going to, you know, build their project and the cost. Obviously, we coordinate amongst the projects, but it's really up to them to decide when, you know, everything's aligned and they're ready to go and have their permits, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
All right, councilmember Dennis?
All right, thank you. Just to kind of go off of councilmember Keen, so his question. So there, I see so many questions that, you know, were brought up about the interrupters and the lead approval. And there's people emailing, I believe the entire council received environmental impacts that I think you addressed with that petition that's being circulated with vehicle emissions, increased traffic. I don't, I guess, is there a rush to have this, I mean, to, if we table this for a few weeks, a few months, to have all of these questions and this petition having time to be circulated and get answers back from the environmental study? Would that cause, I'm not trying to duplicate a question, but would that cause any real issue? I mean, to do things right versus to go through this process and let a lot of these questions go unanswered? How, how, how long, I mean, if it was like tabled for a month, let's say, would that cause a huge impact for your team?
Yeah, I would say.
Mr. Getzer, go ahead.
Yeah. Keep in mind that you have a shot clock in play here. So you have 60 days to make a decision on this application. This has already gone to planning commission and you're, you're running up close to the 60 days. We could extend it to 60 days. So one month may not. But what I would note is if this petition does go forward and if they get 100 signatures, which we have no indication that they have any signatures, and if they're able to make their case to the EQB, which we, the Environmental Quality Review Board, which is who would ultimately determine if EAW was required, there would still be ample opportunity to do that after this decision. Because what an EAW says is you can't issue permits prior to the EAW being completed. So if you approve this and then the EQB reached out to us tomorrow and said, you got to do an EAW, we just wouldn't issue building permits until that was, until that was finalized.
Thank you. Some questions? Otherwise, a motion?
I'll move adopt a resolution approving the conditional use permit amendment with six conditions.
Right, councilmember Keen, and thank you, Mr. Jossam. You can take a seat when you're ready.
Yeah, again, I did spend some time with, again, looking at the thing with staff about the environmental assessment, what the value would be, what the timing is. I also want to keep in front of us right now that the, a lot of the things we're talking about have already been approved or approved by other groups. What we're really looking here is the, because we're under the conditional use permit is the change to 12 stories. So with that in mind, I think we've got the information we need to approve.
Thanks. Other discussion? Councilmember Ransford?
So living along Second Street and having experienced some fairly large development in the area and walking constantly. Practically speaking, there's going to be a lot of large developments up and down Second Street. What, it's what makes the bus rapid transit work. So it's really a question of which way do we want to go? Do we want to go up or do we want to go in? And in my opinion, a larger building along Second Street that does not intrude as deeply, say, as the Berkman did, which still is only five houses, is preferable. So it's not a question of do we not do these? It's a question of how do we do this? And I think the comprehensive plan and the BRT make it really clear that density to this level along Second Street, while it, believe me, I've fought the Berkman tooth and nail. I get it. But at the same time, it's changed. We're five, six, seven years later, this is going to happen along Second Street. So I've walked a lot, thought a lot about this and, you know, it's a question of which way do you want these developments to go? Do you want them to eat into the neighborhoods or do you want them to go vertical along Second Street? My choice would be to have them go vertical so that there's less impact into the neighborhoods. So I'm, I'm happy with what we're seeing tonight. And that's really primarily my reason for a lot, being okay with it going so high.
For those thoughtful comments, councilmember Ransford, I think they're well said. And I think this is where we want density and where we've planned for it. So appreciate that we're maximizing this opportunity. Councilmember Dennis?
I agree. We need to have more homes, more places for people to live of all incomes. But I, after listening to people speaking today and reading emails, I just, I think we could do this in a week, I mean, a couple of weeks or a month, and get these questions answered, to have an impact study done, to have these, you know, environmental issues kind of cleared up. Because the more we get into a project, the harder it is to change the project. So if there is environmental things or impact issues, I, I would, I'm a big fan of, you know, increasing as many homes as we possibly can to make sure people have, have a roof over their head. But I don't think we should do things rushed and brash. We want to do things right. So I would like to move to table this item to December 4th, a council meeting for those reasons.
For a second? All right, no second. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor of the motion to approve? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay? Motion carries? Did I do that right? Did I say all opposed? Yeah. Okay. I think we need a break. We are going to take a little break, reconvene at eight, just after 8:50.
Recording stopped.
We know this is a need, specifically the pace of production of owner occupied housing. Needs to be doubled to create nine hundred six units a year for us to meet our demand by twenty thirty. And that's doubled since we're not, we haven't been meeting that gap in the last three years essentially. So what did we look at when we put together this package? We're considering incentives for infrastructure investment. We know that's been communicated to us as a gap and adds to the cost of the home. If we're creating new housing, we need to consider ways to subsidize housing to lower the cost. We need to consider development fee relief. That's specifically something that is paid to the city to create housing. And certainly, we should always be thinking of process improvement. How can we lower costs that way to benefit households? General context real quick for you to keep in mind before I go into the potential funding sources. We looked at a scenario essentially, so in looking at the numbers I'm about to propose to you, keep in mind, think of targeting about a hundred modest price homes. Not necessarily saying that's the goal, but keep that number in mind for what we kind of arrived at for some numbers annually. The CIA specifically asked for modest priced homes out or below two hundred thirty thousand dollars. And then these next two bullets, to keep into context, the average initial development fees range around twenty thousand dollars per lot. So that includes direct fees paid to the city as well as indirect fees. So what it costs to put in a road, for example, that doesn't go to the city, but we require it. And so there are, there, there's a cost associated with that. So twenty thousand dollars per lot. And then lastly, the average direct fee cost to the city is about eight hundred, eight thousand four hundred dollars. That's including kind of our, our highest development costs. That's not all inclusive, inclusive. And once again, there's a lot of assumptions made for us to kind of propose some, some numbers, so keep that in mind. All right, so with that, we essentially identified four different ways that we could fund incentives that are proposed. And this is something we're looking for feedback on specifically. So one is to subsidize through the potential economic vitality sales tax fund. So as I mentioned, it costs about twenty thousand dollars per lot to support a hundred homes. We can also lessen that amount to have a bigger impact. You could consider fifteen thousand per lot to impact a hundred thirty homes. Though I'm not asking for you to vote on economic vitality sales tax tonight. I want you to keep in mind that we do have some ideas if it were passed. And about twenty six point five million over sixteen years is, is currently, you know, considered for supporting the creation of homes. So my point is that could be a viable source of funding to support some of these initiatives. If we went this route of subsidizing through a separate fund, it could be administered with moderate ease. And just for the twenty thousand per lot, per a hundred homes, that would cost over ten million dollars for five homes. So that is one option. Next is a supplemental fee assessed on utility rate payers. So this would be implemented citywide, meaning residential and commercial, and result in all rate payers paying for new development essentially. So I want to be clear what that impact would mean. If you spread it across, it would cost all rate payers about an extra twenty dollars per year to support subsidizing our highest direct fees, which is about eighty five hundred dollars. So we lowered it to that amount versus the twenty five thousand. This would take some difficulty upfront to administer something like this to set it up, but less later on. The third option is to just delay the collection of fees. So that's feedback we've heard. It's a lot of capital upfront to create housing, which limits kind of our builders and developers. So delaying collection, which has some risk involved, right, is also an option. We would propose an impact of about twenty thousand per lot. This would technically have no cost to the city. We just have a risk of us, of a risk to us of about ten million dollars over five years if we supported five hundred old homes. This would be administered with monitor, moderate ease as well. And then the last option that we considered was finding a way to borrow money to invest in land ahead of time, right? So bonding for infrastructure costs to defer payment of fees, or just directly investing in infrastructure upfront without delaying collection. Just as well, similar numbers, impact of about twenty thousand per lot, ten million for five years. This could be repaid with tax increment, increment financing or TIF, and collected at the time of the sale of the home. So that's been done before. There is some risk involved if the development doesn't occur, but this would be administered with ease. So take that into mind, impact on our, our community, right? Risk and how easy it is to administer. So with that, staff specifically would recommend, recommend, do you have a question before you hear our recommendation?
Yeah, I, again, I just, before you go off this, I just, I just want to, the math isn't holding for me. Cause you said two hundred and thirty K per house and now you're talking about twenty thousand dollars off. And that gets, but I don't know if anyone is building houses for two fifty. I thought the gap was more like sixty or seventy or ninety thousand.
Yeah, I would say that's fair as far as what the gap is. I'm proposing a number based on what developer pays based to the city directly and indirectly. So the gap is bigger. This is a starting place, I would say, of what is owed to the city. Does that make sense or paid because?
Okay, I'm just, so just to put in perspective, if we did these, we're not getting, I mean, these, these are just incremental steps we could take towards it.
Correct.
Okay, that, that's helpful.
City's recommendation is option one, finding a way to subsidize these fees to make sure, subsidize these fees, consider eligible properties, give us some way to decide what properties get this benefit and have less of an impact on the tax base. This would have a higher impact as it relates to the overall cost to build a new home, because we'd be able to do the twenty thousand versus the eighty five hundred kind of quoted before. So we would recommend a way to subsidize these fees. This is just a, a general kind of overview of some of the recommendations. There's an executive summary and a long report as well. But once again, also just looking for general feedback. There's a lot of time spent in looking at what other communities do outside consulting report, talking with some of our partners in advance and also considering things council brought forward. So we could certainly always keep thinking of ideas. So what we're looking is for general feedback and what we've got so far. And then we would want to bring it back to council for from formal consideration. But essentially, a quick list of some of the ideas listed in the report include investment in land and infrastructure in advance. So what does this look like for infrastructure? It means considering ordinance changes to allow to subsidize newer upgraded right of way infrastructure needs for subdivision. So finding ways to do things, things in advance to lower the costs for land. That means continuing to contribute to pre-development costs such as the city initiated land use amendment, environmental reviews, like a phase one for city owned parcels seeking disposition. It's a way for us to make it an impact, right, to lower the cost and then have more of a say in, in the costs and the benefit of that, that land as well. The fee reimbursement program has been a successful pilot program. It's created about thirty three units, or I should say supported thirty three units. And we've heard about twenty two in the pipeline. So that would be an easy program that we could adapt going forward to continue to support owner occupied housing. Reviewing, reviewing ways to improve our processes. So grading plan review has been kind of called out to us as something we could look at separately as a way that adds time to the process. And how could we better consider that to lower the time and the cost that, that is impacted by developers and builders? Tiff policy is something we would like to call out specifically and bring back to the council to, to consider. We've used this in the past to benefit owner occupied housing kind of earlier in the two thousand, two thousand teens. We've used it as a tool for pay as you go model to minimize risk. So for example, previously, we would, we were able to use it to provide about ten thousand dollars to households after they sold to kind of lower the cost or serve as down payment assistance in that way. So that could be done again. And we could also consider policy changes to TIF to bond, to fund new infrastructure costs for housing creation, always to lower the cost. Tax abatement is another tool that we don't use very often. So that's another one we would like to recommend consideration in using. Generally, you can't use TIF and tax abatement. It's one or the other, one or the other. Tiff generally has a higher payout to the beneficiary than tax abatement does. But Tiff has a lot more strings attached to it. So there are some situations when tax payment is a better tool and we should consider that. We've considered for projects like downtown redevelopment, for example, when Tiff wasn't eligible. So another recommendation. And then I won't go into them, but.
Pause for a second.
Later, French.
Okay.
I won't go into them, but there's a number of housing programs as well. A lot of our partners are doing work in this space. So considering how we can leverage those efforts with other programs, right? Some, some agencies already have effective down payment assistance programs. We could consider something like a land bank, right? So there's a number of those as well that I won't get into, but those are just a few that I've got. All right, so with that, I think this is my last slide. Yep. Once again, really, we're, we're just looking for general feedback on the direction, general thoughts and feedback on a funding source, not asking for formal approval tonight. General thoughts on feedback. Our next step, so once we got general direction, we would engage with the building and development community for additional input on what we proposed. We would want to return to council for an update or adoption. And just as well, it could, it could result in us bringing back specific program guidelines based on your feedback. So with that, applause for comments, questions.
All right, Councilmember Palmer, go ahead.
Well, thank you. The twenty six page report that you did is absolutely wonderful. It's, reading it really, really hit home. You took this much information and put it down to twenty six pages, which I think is, is remarkable. If you read it, it tells you the things we can and can't do. You know, Rochester's uniquely, we have the Housing Coalition, which, which can help out housing. We have obviously counting that's willing to, to work with us on this. This is a huge need. The, the, the two hundred thirty thousand dollars was back in February sixth is when we started. I think what we should do is have the staff come back with a, a, a price that they think that we should be subsidizing homes at. Two thirties too low. We were visiting houses in Wabashaw. They were two fifty, two fifty three. They were slab on grade or they were a split level with an attached double garage on them. The lot prices were ten thousand dollars due to some other programs. But I think that we could, we could subsidize and incentivize. And I think that that's the thing that people need to remember is that we're trying to incentivize builders to get back into this market, to build homes and, and, and do this. I personally support all five of those items. I think all five being TIF and being fee and reimbursement and all those items are things that we need to have the staff come back and look at. And so that's kind of my, my statement on this. Again, I, I think this twenty six page report is one of the best reports I've ever read in housing and it hits a lot of good pluses and minuses. And your executive summary was good. So I, I support all the items coming back to us in with the idea that that two thirty price gets bumped up. For some reason, you can justify a price that, that makes sense for us to subsidize.
That's the most positive set of comments I've ever heard from you, but how great.
I've been the most patient person you've ever seen.
On this topic, I know, yeah. You, staff did a really excellent job, so thank you for that. I also support multiple strategies. Absolutely support if we get through tomorrow with really great news for our city that we tap into that resource for subsidizing fees. Other comments, Councilmember Bransford Keen?
Yeah, no, this is, but twenty six page report is an absolutely fantastic piece of work. Thank you so much. It, it's interesting. We just passed an apartment building that's very dense along Second Street, but it's, it's also important to not take our eye off the ball in terms of single family homes as well. And I'm, I like this focus, it's good. We need to go up, but we also need to, you know, recognize that single family homes are still very important to people. That's what a lot of people want. If you look at, say, for example, Des Moines Unified Development Plan, they, they go up and they go out and they do it very, very well. And they have one of the healthiest housing markets in the Midwest. And so I, I'm all for all four of these. And this is really great. And I echo all of Mr. Palmer's sentiments on this.
Councilmember Keen?
Um, yeah, again, I, I'm looking at this, trying to keep a more holistic view of our five housing needs with senior housing, with, with single family homes with BIPOC and trying to keep those all. But I think the key, and you sort of alluded to it, is do we have the economic vitality funding? And what percent of that would be considered reasonable over the next ten or fifteen years? It's going to be used as, as incentives or ways of stimulating or help creating this, this scaffolding funding model that's been successful in other areas that can, can we be a part of that? I am more concerned when you start talking about utility funding or these backend loading, because it, it, they all have a little gaminess to them of trying to, I'll, I'll pay you tomorrow if you'll do this for me today. And, and I worry about those, that the city can enter those and the world changes. And the, the, the base rate payers of the property owners in Rochester are stuck with some of those things. The thing I, that I didn't see in this as much is, is when you talk about, we're going to do this to subsidize affordable housing, is have you thought about the backend or how do you enforce that? I know with your fee system right now, these things are all paid in advance and then recovered when the home does sell at a certain level. Are, are, would that be a similar model, what we're talking about here? Or is this based on, we'll, we'll give this economic vitality money out with the, with the promise of having these being sold at a certain price point?
Yeah, I would say we want to take that into consideration with, with each specific program that we were to enact to ensure that the household benefits specifically, right? There are ways to do that through restricted deeds and purchase agreements and other ways through that. So I would say we want to look at that independently and ensure that's the case. And we are able to do that with some of our other plans that our partners are also doing at the Coalition and the County have a similar goal. So I can't give you a one stop answer of this is how we do it for each of them, but agreed that that would be considered to ensure that the household is the, the end beneficiary.
So again, just to kind of in a bigger picture, what we're doing with this report is I do support the, the priority of, of improving our affordable, single family starter homes. Frankly, I find most affordable, single family homes are not brandling new builds. It's just not the way it's done. But that's, that, have you done any part of this work with the idea that what we do with the, the other funds where we use them for fixing up older homes and making those, keeping those on the market as affordable homes? That's considered a totally separate project than what this was?
Yeah, I'd say that's separate. I would say all of those things are considered with proposals for economic vitality funding if approved, and that's considered as well.
Okay. The, the other thing I just, I just thought of like when Councilmember Palmer talks about what goes on in Wabashaw, our, our funding partners in this, when we talk about the county and the foundation and first homes, they have a bigger geographic reach than we do. When we deal with that kind of stuff, we only deal with Rochester footprint?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, Councilmember Dennis?
Okay, thank you. So this is a much needed in our, our world here in Rochester and, and around the US as well. The thing that I want, and I've been hearing from people who have a lot of accessibility issues, we look at people aging in place and, and in their home. And, and when we talk about accessibility, a lot of people want to know that, that all the houses, all affordable housing is accessible, which, you know, like it's hard with old homes and different things to make doorways wide enough. And there's a lot of, what percentage, and maybe if I, if I miss it, are we looking at for accessibility for these homes?
I would say we haven't committed to numbers like that. So this is feedback I'm, I'm looking for frankly. Generally, when we're looking at all of our projects, we tend to associate needs of our, our aging population, not that those are the same, but different. But we're certainly thinking about kind of mobility specifically and trying to consider that. With owner occupied housing, we pay more attention to slab on grade, for example. So I'd say we don't have a number at this time, so that's feedback I'm looking for.
Okay, thank you. And I've known from experience of talking to people who actually have, a friend up in the cities has a accessible apartment, however, doesn't need it. And the owner allowed this person to move in because they wanted to fill the place. So now it's someone who does act, and you know, actually needs this, you know, wheel accessible shower and, and everything that's in this apartment, it's already occupied. So is there, I mean, just something to think about too, is to keep those accessible housing for people who need it instead of, you know, just filling them. And then also there's.
Pause for just a second, I think Ms. Woodward wanted to weigh in on that.
And then I, I did want to comment, thank you, Council President, members of council. I wanted to clarify for Councilmember Keen, part of what we kind of, as part of this report, it's kind of a point in time that will be kind of going through. And we intend to kind of bring back and report back on any of these programs and make adjustments as needed. And I just wanted to kind of clarify that this is an ongoing thing that we'll be kind of providing updates and evaluating as we go through. I just wanted to kind of add on to that in response to some of the questions that you had as well.
Very good, thank you.
Continue, Ms. Dennis.
Thank you. My other question, so there's, they're looking at like cultural sensitivity, looking at blended families, looking at, you know, there's a lot of homes that need multiple rooms, not just the traditional two, three bedroom homes that we see a lot of. Is that being taken into account to make sure that there is a, a supply of homes that will accommodate all family sizes?
Yeah, I, I would say generally that's something we take into consideration. We're having active discussions right now, once again, between those three, three major housing agencies of, we know what our priorities are, but how do we support the diversifying needs of each household specifically? So that's another good point and feedback we're looking for. But generally, we do always have that in mind when we're reviewing every funding application as well. So thanks for pointing it out.
All right, thank you.
Do you need a final, a formal motion or are we just discussing this item?
I don't think I need a formal motion. I think I'm just looking for feedback.
All right, Councilmember Wall and then Palmer.
Thank you. I gotta get a different mechanism because my report is twenty nine pages instead of twenty six. It would take me less time to read the report. Of, of the funding sources, I would be less excited about number two. I think that's what Mr. Keen was saying as well, that to just add another fee to everybody in the city, I think would be less helpful. And again, cycling back to, I think, so that I can understand it better, what Mr. Keen was saying. We are designing this so that these are always affordable homes that when upon resale in five years, when the original family leaves, they will still be affordable for a newer family in the community. That if somehow the market has gone up eight percent a year for five years, all of a sudden, this, this house is not forty percent more expensive with the fees built back into it. Our Housing Coalition has something like that in terms of the homes that they build.
Yeah, I, I would say just reactively in what's in front of you. That's not necessarily the proposal for every program. If it's feedback the council wanted to provide, certainly consider it. I would consider it. I think for us, we're looking to how do we meet the, the many needs of our supply issue, which one of those does include investment into community land trust, which is the first homes program that does ensure that. So we would want to consider that just as well as all the other solutions. At least that would be staff recommendation and that would be feedback I would want from the council.
I think there's a really interesting question in there because I appreciate where you're coming from, but we also want to create homeownership as an opportunity for wealth building, right? So being able to sell your home at a higher price and earn money back is also important to consider. So yes, good discussion to have. Did you have another comment? Okay, Councilmember Palmer?
I'm just a couple of things, listening to everybody's comments. You know, TIF is a program that we used to use in the nineties for residential. And I think that that's something that would be helpful for us. You know, the twenty dollar utility fee, that is something that would go to every homeowner in Rochester. It would raise eighty five hundred dollars per lot. And the reason I like that is that we need to have this be a program for everybody in Rochester because if you want somebody to be at the gas station or the restaurant to work for you, if you want somebody to be hired, you need to have that. And I don't think twenty dollars is, is a fee that's going to be a, a burdensome to somebody to have that investment, to have their neighbors be able to live in a home, have their, their, their daughters and their sons move into Rochester. I don't think that that's going to be a problem. I think having them look at that and, and kind of maybe refining that a little bit more would be better. You know, the economics of this is, is huge for everybody. It's, it's that owner occupied, that's what we're trying to hit. You know, when you talk about twenty two percent BIPOC community not be able to own a home, there's other programs that help people that we can, we can go back and, and help with as homeownership. And, you know, my grandfather owned a house, my dad owned a house, I have owned many houses. I know how to own a house, not a lot of people do. And there's programs out there, people from different cultures who've never owned a home, don't know they have to change the furnace filter. And, and there's programs out there, there's down payment assistance for people. There's credit rating people that will go out there and help you nonprofits in, in the state that will help you fix your credits, you could afford this home, which is a dream for most people. Ms. Dennis brought up accessibility. You know, when you deal a slab on grade, accessibility is a huge issue for a lot of different things, but it's not hard on a slab on grade to be able to make a, a doorway a little wider, a little bit of thought process going into some of these houses. And so I think that's a huge thing. The other thing, if you think about this, if we get that price range just right, we have a lot of homeowners who live in two hundred and sixty thousand dollar houses in Sunset Terrace, Country Club Manor, Alton Hills. They could literally sell their home as a senior and move into a slab on grade for about that same price and not have to remortgage their home. They'd have a newer home, they'd have it be a slab on grade properly. They'd have a double garage that's just attached, which most of those are detached. And then we could take that home and we could, we could put in the land trust. We could, we could do energy efficiencies on that home and use the IRA money on, on getting that home fixed up. There's just a lot of abilities on this. And, you know, I look at this as a huge thing. The other item that didn't come up in this report is the, is the CDBG Program one oh eight, which we need to look at, and that's a, a, a funding source that we could use. And so I'm excited about this and, and I'm again, very happy of this report and, and the comments that have been made here today. Thank you.
Good thoughts, Councilmember Palmer. Great job. I think your big picture point is there, this is the moment to sort of weave the supports together so we can get to that affordable level. All right. Thank you, Ms. Edens. All right, let us move on to item H two, which is the regulation of camping activity on city property. And I know we have Mr. Spindler Craig and our police leadership here to talk us through it. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmembers, yes, Michael Spindler Craig, City Attorney, serving you and the public. Appreciate the opportunity to present and introduce this item to you along with my partners, law enforcement personnel today to talk through a number of these dynamics. It may be helpful to initially just set some context here, how we ended up at this point today. All of you are aware that this is, this is not a new conversation. This is a conversation that you have considered pretty intensively over the last five months, I would say, through a number of study sessions and other, other venues for those conversation. It's not lost on any of us that attached to this RCA was a twenty fourteen resolution by a council that preceded all of you, considering exactly many of the same, same conversations, same difficult points of public policy. So this item is my best effort to, to bring back to you a reflection of your conversation through the past four or five months, consideration of a, an ordinance that really codifies in effect what the twenty fourteen council considered back then, which is making clear that camping is a problematic activity on city land, including city right of way areas. Would just take you back briefly, the conversation from these past five months through the study session and in early June, there was an explanation to the council of the encampment protocol that a number of city departments have been working through for these past few years, doing their best to encourage those folks towards resources. A protocol that included some level of notice to identified encampments and encouraging folks again towards resources. And at the end of the day, trying to move them on from problematic city spaces, particularly focused on, on the more public safety sensitive spaces in the city. Through some of that discussion, there was consideration of, of a no camping ordinance. That conversation continued through the summer and then in early September, we received additional direction from you and consultation with law enforcement partners as to what may be the most effective tool for them to assist in this process. The draft ordinance that is before you tonight is, is that. It is a draft. It is not intended to be in, in final form. And frankly, that's partly a reflection of the complexities of the conversations you've had over these, over these last five months. As part of the process of prepping this RCA, I did go back and re-listened to that conversation and tried to pull together the threads of continuity in, in your conversation and what was important to you and did that along with law enforcement partners as well, trying to better understand what enforcement tools they believe will be most helpful to them in addressing these public safety concerns. So again, that draft ordinance was an attempt. Uh, so again, um, that draft ordinance was an attempt to, to best reflect uh, that prior conversation. I think it may be helpful to hear in more detail uh, for your consideration directly from our law enforcement friends, talking about their experience. Um, not only from these, this past summer, um, but now a number of years of experience in this space. Thank you.
Council President, Council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Um, let me start here. Um, it's a very complex issue. If there's no easy answers, there's no easy solutions. Uh, what I can tell you though is without a doubt, uh, Rochester PD is being asked by this community to respond to people camping uh, in public spaces. Uh, camping and large encampments uh, continue to be a frequent complaint to the city or the Rochester Police Department. Case in point, uh, we've had two thousand seven hundred and fifty four contacts with people experiencing homelessness this year. Um, we're, we're protected in about thirty five hundred contacts. Now that's in the form of education, encouragement, and sometimes, sometimes occasionally enforcement. But if you compare that with our twenty twenty one numbers, one thousand six hundred and seventy seven, that's a hundredfold increase of our time and commitment uh, in contacts with uh, people experiencing homelessness. In addition to that, uh, Rochester PD and city staff in partnership have cleaned up and swept a hundred and six encampments in the city year to date. And that takes a significant amount of effort and resources. Um, we are certainly, without a doubt, not trying to criminalize homelessness. In fact, the proposed ordinance in front of you today doesn't even have the word homelessness in it. What we are trying to address, what we are trying to deal with is the larger global issues and behaviors associated with these encampments. We've also had three deaths year to date by people in tents that have overdosed from drugs. We've had four fires. When we clean up these encampments, we deal with evidence of drug use, needles. We've had numerous overdose calls for service. We got trash debris, negative environmental impacts, human waste. And most recently, in one of our most recent encampments, for some reason, I can't explain it, the individual chose to cart around a dead deer carcass. So that's what we are dealing with. This ordinance, th- this, this request really comes after three years of really being on the front end of encouraging people towards resources, educating them what's available uh, in this community. Um, but it's a needed tool to address that small group of people, those small group of individuals that are just resistant and continue to camp in public spaces. I think you heard a lot of people object to this ordinance in here and applaud their comments. I think that's what makes America great is debate and open discussion. And other than perhaps more shelter space, we didn't really hear a lot of solutions. But I propose the solution is both and. We need more shelter space. We do need more resources. But in our experience, this group will not seek services without that current options removed from in front of them and kind of that push concept to resources. And that's what we're proposing with this ordinance is that push concept to resources. Um, so I think the solution is that both and piece. Uh, with that, I'll invite uh, perhaps Captain Stillwell at any time for questioning. He can jump in as well. Maybe not right now, but uh, anytime questions come up, uh, because he has been in the forefront of this issue.
Anything to add right away, Captain Stillwell, or would you like to respond to questions?
No, I think the only thing I would add is, you know, we've heard from some of the public speakers about the survey the county did. And in one of the things that I don't, I don't know if you've been apprised of, they don't tell you this, that when posed a question about if we provided a camping space, would people go? They said no. And so we don't believe that it's just a space issue. There are people that want absolutely no restrictions on what they can and can do in public spaces. And, and again, seventy percent of people will not go to shelter, no matter how big we build it. And, and again, we're dealing with a very small number of people um, that uh, through a variety of uh, issues are unable to do what's best for themselves. And we're just trying to add another tool. Uh, we do know of individuals that enforcement has driven them at the second or third time into resources and, and are now housed. And, and so again, I think um, you know, I think it's, there's a human cost here, you know. Um, our partners weren't there when the daughter of that fifty four year old that died in the snow dump last week wanted answers, the police department was. And it, it gets, comes to a point where people have to acknowledge that this is a, a complex problem, that the police department can't solve it by themselves. But there are a group that without removing certain availabilities, which is public spaces to camp in and build encampments in, are not going to, no matter what we build.
Are you ready for questions?
Absolutely.
All right, let's do this. Councilmember Bransford, then Wall.
So I made some notes as I listened to the comments and there were three phrases of criminalization, I think you've already addressed. But um, two phrases that really jumped out at me were purely punitive and application of responsibility. Um, and I would like to get your feedback on what you think about those particular phrases as it relates to this ordinance. Do you believe it's purely punitive? Do you believe you're abdicating your responsibility? Do we believe we're abdicating our responsibility?
Yeah, I'd argue that, um, you know, back several years ago, we wrote our homeless outreach plan. And so we're going to continue to follow that, which is really placing that emphasis on here's the resources. Here's what's available. Here's where you can go and really encourage them. And enforcement really is that last option piece. Uh, so no, I don't feel that it is punitive. Um, if you look at the hundred and six camps that we've dealt with, uh, if you look at the two thousand seven hundred and fifty four uh, contacts that we've had, very few of them have resulted in that enforcement. It's because of our philosophy and compassionate approach on the front end of really trying to drive and encourage people to the resources. But at some point, um, you know, we need to incentivize them, as Captain Stillwell said, um, that it's, it becomes a game of, well, you're not going to do anything, so I'm not going to do anything. And, and so I think that's um, that's part of the problem, part of the issue. As far as advocating responsibility, I think it is our responsibility to go out there. Um, I, I think the more, again, this is why I say it's a both and, and I think I'm proud of the city and the county efforts. I think we've solved somewhat of the, you know, multi-layered um, problem here and the fact that we now have uh, I believe additional shelter space that will be opening uh, December first of the Salvation Army. And so that was a joint effort and that's why it's both and. But now how do we get people there? The more humane thing is to drive them to that shelter space, sleeping indoors, safe environment, secure environment, rather than outside.
Councilmember Wall?
In the report narrative of the requests for action, uh, it talks about um, an ordinance uh, being a tool that would help law enforcement officials encourage uh, persons experiencing homelessness toward greater utilization of shelter or other social services. So that seems to be the positive aspect of the ordinance, uh, while it seems all the speakers um, were very concerned about the criminalization of people. So could you give us some examples of uh, times in which you would possibly enforce with uh, some kind of violation or the other examples probably far more prevalent in which you would simply try to encourage people toward greater services?
Yeah, so I, I would give a couple of examples. One uh, would be an individual that, that we worked with our partners to find them a place to live. They refused to go, uh, and they refused to stop violating the ordinance they were violating. They were arrested and taken to jail. Time forward, they, obviously, people don't spend time in jail for their offenses, other than to make a court appearance. After the second time, um, after the second time, uh, we again, were forced to take enforcement action because the citizens of this community have a right to be able to, you know, use public space too. I mean, you know, and, 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 and after that incident, we again, brought services in. We said, we have a place, we have a place. That individual is housed today, a- as of two weeks ago. Would it never went in without any enforcement action? We know that, our partners know that. They might not say it out loud, but they know it. Uh, and, and um, so again, we don't plan to change our philosophy on how to use these tools in that we're not going to arrest people when we don't have some other option for them. But we also know, uh, again, we, we have looked, we have tried to look at what's happening other places. And we know with no restriction on camping in public places, not only do more people use the public space to camp in, but less people avail themselves to shelter services because again, the bear, they, there's individuals out there, and let me be clear, because I think some people are confused. These people are being victimized in the camps. There's violence in the camps. There are predators out there preying on these people. And, and again, our partners know that, uh, they see that. Uh, it, it, but we can engage in this conversation uh, of like, how do we get them uh, to go to services? And the system will not engage. It's unfortunate that they won't engage without a judge ordering somebody to get it uh, an assessment. So, so I think it works both ways, right? We're, we're really just trying to add this because what we're doing is not working. We, we haven't reduced the people sleeping in public spaces by one, one bit. In fact, it's growing. Uh, the chief mentions the dead deer. We posted an encampment under the current process. The individual living there decided, well, this will be really fun. I got forty eight hours to go through every dumpster in this part of town. Bring everything from those dumpsters into this site, drag a roadkill deer into this site. And, and then I'm going to stand there and laugh when Parks and Recs has to come with a dump truck and clean it up. I mean, that's a gamesmanship that's going on with a very small number of individuals. And I want to make that clear. I have defended the behavior that, that I've defended in the downtown spaces, the people that know all bad activity isn't done by people experiencing homelessness. Most are doing none. You know, we have ten people that have been trespassed out of the six hundred in our database that have identified as experiencing homelessness. So we are talking about small numbers here. But I can guarantee you that space will fill up and it won't be with the individuals that are currently choosing to thumb their nose at a council resolution from two thousand fourteen. We hear it every time we go out there. Show me where it says, show me where it says I can't camp here. You know, and, and, and i- it's just a balancing act for us between those folks that just want to use the park for its intended purposes, which is not camping uh, in the public spaces. And, and currently we're trespassing people from parks, you know, based on this behavior, which I think is even more punitive. I mean, there's individuals that in theory can't step or subject to arrest if they would step into a park tomorrow. And I don't want them moved out of the parks. I want the encampments to be controlled and, 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 and not, you know, to have some level of restriction, reasonable restriction on what you can and can't do.
So to be very specific, uh, a woman who came to the mic, microphone and talked about her very tough time in her life. Uh, lost a home, had a couple of small children. From my experience with RPD, I can't imagine you would use this ordinance to arrest someone like that.
I, I can answer that, Councilmember. No, we would do everything in our power to get that woman resources. In fact, we have a voucher program for temporary hotel assistance for people just like that. And uh, we'd continue to leverage our partners of this community case by case basis. Again, what we're talking about is a smaller subset, uh, a population that is just really difficult to deal with out there.
And I think this term arrest, like, we don't foresee arresting people for this necessarily. We see, we ticket for misdemeanors. They don't go to jail. I mean, you're hearing some uh, s- some things that just aren't based in the facts of how we do our business.
Could you talk through that then? What does it actually look like?
Sure, so again, um, what this would look like is, and, and I think what we like about the way the ordinance is currently, at least the draft is constructed, is it acknowledges that this isn't the only solution to the problem, that we will still have to prioritize where we do our work, that we won't uh, ticket anybody without a warning and without outreach from services. And then again, uh, we are currently still uh, getting mostly voluntary compliance. So I think it would be, you would get a ticket with a court date and you can come into court and you can, you know, explain your situation in court and, 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 and it would only be the continual criminal activity that would eventually end up in arrest. Uh, w- we're seeing this uh, be used very effi- effectively in the Skyway system, that, that we're, we're not arresting people that are trespassing in the Skyway system right now. We are ticketing some that, that are doing behaviors that um, drug use, uh, starting fires, uh, you know, uh, doing those types of things. Uh, we still are sticking with what we've, we're committed to, dealing with this issue with compassion, uh, educating people first, but we know there's a small percentage that a ticket is really the only, the only way to impact upon them, that they can't continue with their current behavior.
Well, I have one more question. It's far different from what I'm talking about, so I can come back later.
No, go ahead.
I- is it true that we're not using the landing with their great uh, resources uh, as a, a means to uh, trying to figure out the, the best solution for homelessness in Rochester?
Well, I, all I can say is my team work, I meet with Dan Fyfield and Catholic Charities. I don't know, it's either bi-weekly or monthly. My team is down there a lot. He had a forum this weekend, Lieutenant Magnussen, who is, you know, we are looking for solutions, just like everybody else. Uh, but we have to balance, again, um, we have to balance a very difficult situation and what's acceptable behavior and what's not. And, and, and I think that's why we have come forward after, uh, I know many of you have gotten complaints from citizens. We get daily, we have daily public comment, you know, all day long, my phone rings, public comment, public comment, you know. And, and we're doing the best we can with the tools we have. We believe that this will reset the expectations of what's, what is um, allowed and not allowed in public spaces.
I, I don't believe that public comment was aimed at the police department per se, without further context. I don't know that we can dissect it any further, Councilmember.
I'm sorry, I missed that?
I, I don't know that that public comment was aimed at the police department per se, without further context.
No, I, I did not believe that either. I was kind of looking along the dais and uh, are we as a county or a city not availing ourselves of the great uh, resource that we have?
If, if I may, um, Councilmember, Council President, I do think it's also important to note that the police department can encourage people to seek resources, but they can't make them go there. So it's another challenge that they face where they know that maybe that's a better place for someone to be. But we can't make people experiencing homelessness go to utilize those resources or anyone else. Good. Okay, Councilmember Keen.
A question for City Attorney, uh, Spindler Craig. I, I, I recognize the, your draft as sort of in ordinance form, but uh, usually I'm used to definitions that. But would you have sections on criminal penalty and uh, prioritization of enforcement? Is that part of how you would draft uh, an ordinance?
It, it is. Um, and that was the intent of including some of that language in that draft ordinance, yes.
Okay, because I, oh, go ahead. I, I'm just trying to think of the other ordinance I read. Some of them, I, I, obviously ordinances for me are meant to be interpreted versus read and they're hard for me to read. Um, but I was looking for like definitions and then um, uh, things like that. And that's, that's, that's what we're talking about doing here is um, where we would put, we would have something in front of us. We would vote to approve that and that would become part of our, our, our ordinances or city codes.
It is. Um, yes, and I, I would say there's maybe a, a bit of, of nuance. Certainly, um, we want, we need to make clear through any criminal ordinance exactly what is illegal and what is not.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that part needs to be crystal clear. This is the type of ordinance where we understand that th- there's a reflection of prioritization and understanding that. Law enforcement cannot be at all places at all times.
Yep.
And, um, there will need to be inherently, um, a focus, a triaging, a prioritization on particularly sensitive places. Uh, for, uh, for encampments, um, so. Yes, both through the ordinance itself, there needs to be some reflection and commentary on prioritization. Um, as well as a commitment to building out internal policy, protocol. Standard operating procedure that reflects that same objective prioritization.
Okay, I, I always consider that sort of a, a, a complexity of getting something into an ordinance where you have to both. Fully define it, but also leave yourself the judgment the involved and what, what's needed. Um, but I think one of the things I'm hearing here too is we do want to move towards ordinance, what we did in twenty fourteen was res, uh, was, uh. Um, a res- resolution and we put that on the, on the books, but that's different than having it in our code of, of ordinances.
Yes, absolutely, a fundamental difference.
Okay, with, with that understood, I do want to move to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance prohibiting camping and campsites on. All municipal lands, the ordinance should consider public safety issues, public health considerations. Respectful treatment of all residents and enforcement prioritization consistent with the risks presented.
Uh, point of order, quickly, council member Dennis had some additional questions, but because this isn't a public hearing, it's totally fine that you ask once the. Council member Keen will go after his motion and then we'll hand it over to you, okay? So go ahead, council member Keen.
Um. I guess, so I, I, I made my motion with the idea of trying to, uh, address a, as we've been hearing a complex thing. Um, I, I, I don't think it would be, it'd be unfair to think this is a singular municipal response to people experiencing homelessness. I think what we're being asked for is a tactical step to keep the public spaces public, but also give our. City staff, including the police, the tools they need to do the job we're asking them to do. Um, for those of you who have followed our public comments and our, our public meetings here regarding, um. Uh, people experience homeless response in both our public spaces, goes back to twenty twenty in our Skyway into twenty twenty. One and twenty two in our parks or right of ways or, or, so, um, th- this is something we. Uh, try to do with that balancing of both having a, a like responsible public policy, but also being compassionate. And I think the thing that sticks with me is, and it's something from these different meetings where, uh, Captain Stillwell talks about. There, there is this homeless population, we can, we can kind of consider it one group, but it's not one group, it's not one. Set of, of motives, it's not one set of circumstances that got him there. Um, and what our police are starting to deal with is a really almost like a battle line happening here. Um, and that sticks with me from our September meeting that makes me want. To get something so that our police have better enforcement, but I, but I, I don't do it lightly with the idea that. Like, we don't want to do this as the way some people are interpreting is, we're usually, we're gonna come out with a hammer, we're gonna criminalize homelessness. I don't see that in being, and I'm being asked to do it, nor do I look at the staff that's asking for it and think they're gonna use it that way. We, we've heard some of these things about the numbers with the, the census numbers and, um, I, I hear from different groups that they're going up and. Just observation wise, that it's, it appears to be true, but I also remember census numbers from back in twenty twenty and twenty twenty. Two, I think from the county and they did two years and it wasn't exactly because of COVID, but it was like a census of a hundred and thirty back in twenty twenty. Uh, living in our streets and then it was a, some number a little higher two years later. But it was about thirty of the same names and a big turnover of another group. I, I took that as a very positive story that, uh, going back to one of our commentators, let's make sure homelessness is, uh, a brief. Um, uh, um, and, and a one-time thing. And obviously it's not for everybody, but it did seem like people are experiencing homelessness, they're getting in touch with services, they're. Moving out of it and there's a population doing that and I think that's what most of us think of homelessness, but there's another group. And they're living in our streets and parks and I think this is one of the reasons our law enforcement is asking for better tools to deal with that. And it's one of the reasons I tried to come to my peers tonight and see if we can do that.
Thanks, council member Keen, so council member Dennis, you can ask your questions and you have your speech or if you want to.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I have a lot to say on this, but I'm gonna wait for a little bit and say stuff later. My, I want to go back before the motion and ask all my questions, please, so. Yeah, so we will count this as your time. Before my, um, yeah, I have like several questions, so, um, my questions are. Um, that, uh, so. What I know of the court system is they're overburdened with, I mean, they just incredible, um, stress with the amount of people that are going through. For many, many different court issues. Has this been run by the court system that, that, you know, like, if, if this has passed, we're gonna, I believe, gonna have a huge. Influx of people going through this court system that they're already overburdened with cases right now. Has that been addressed with the court system? Just, you know, down the hall here.
Thank you, council member, I, I think I can answer that one, I, I, as you've heard already. We fully understand that criminal ordinances and the criminal system are blunt instruments that we use as an absolute last resort. That has been our mindset to date when dealing with a trespass tool. Um, and would still be our mindset going forward, um, so we do not. Anticipate or expect a large number of citations or folks entering the criminal justice system. Um, so I, I would say that initially and, um. Otherwise, to the extent that there may be a case or two that end up in the criminal system, they can handle it. And will handle it appropriately.
So, um, I can address some of my comments later on the use of words on, I believe, our otherizing. People experiencing homelessness, but I'm coming back to question here, uh, so what happens when you issue a ticket? And they just, you know, I, I mean, can't pay, they can't pay, so do, um, you keep issuing tickets? I mean, you, you have this situation where people are homeless or people are, you know, friends on the street or, um, people who, uh. What do you do if you just continuously issue tickets, they live here? Do you just keep issuing tickets and, and increase their criminal record?
Yeah, short, short answer is, is no, um, certainly a legitimate question, I, I would say that on this case type. And frankly, I would say on all case types within the criminal justice system, our focus is on rehabilitation and trying to connect folks with. Resources. The focus is not on fines or taking away liberty. From people, it would be the exact same conversation in that space as happens day to day on the streets, which is. What does someone need? And doing our best to encourage them towards, towards that help. So whether that's shelter, whether that's treatment or some other kind of. Helpful avenue. Um, that frankly is, is the focus, I. Work in the court system day to day, um, fines and jail time are understood by all to be blunt instruments. Used as a last resort and I would frankly not expect. Anyone receiving this kind of a citation to, to walk away with a fine.
So, this is a question I'm, I have. When I volunteered for the warming center, I've heard stories about people who, they ran out of beds, right, there's, they're turning people away almost every day. And all of a sudden someone has, oh, they're turned away and they have, my heart hurts, I, I have, you know, and, or I can't breathe. And then they go to the hospital, right, because they, they don't want to, they don't want to be on the streets and there was no beds available, so they. Instead of being forced in the incredible cold or incredible heat or the elements, uh, there's no beds at the warming center, ob- obviously Dorothy, Dorothy Day has already closed. Um, there's a, there's no beds, so you have people who want to have shelter who don't have the access. So do you think that's gonna happen? I mean, it's happening right now, people who, who are faking, um, illnesses to go to the hospital, emergency room, so they don't have to be in the cold. Would that be something if they, they need a place to stay, go to the jail, I mean, that's a very. You know, logical place to go if, if you really want to stay out of the cold.
Yeah, I, I just don't see that as what we're seeing, I think again, w- we're not. We're, we're not gonna sit and wait at the warming shelter for the last three people to get turned away and then try to figure out where they go. We're gonna try to find them another option, whether that means a housing voucher, whether that mean, jail is not in that conversation, there, it does nobody any good. To, um. Put people in jail when they, when they can, when they can follow, uh, the reasonable restrictions that are placed on them by. An ordinance or a statute, um, I, I, again, I think we. We are forced to come here and talk about this in a vacuum when it really needs to be talked about. In context of doubling shelter space. And our PAR program where we have beds for people when they're ready for treatment and how do we better? Utilize resources. And probably not cops convincing people to go to a treatment bed, those things all work together, but. For the purpose of tonight, we're here to talk about one issue and that's a tool that we believe. Uh, will help us with a small number of people and a small number of cases. That everything else has not worked and, and we look forward to more opportunity to work with our partners. And better ways to encourage people to get the help they need, whether that's substance abuse treatment, mental health treatment. Uh, and we don't feel like this is a barrier to any of that, we don't believe that, um. You know, these are gonna create criminal records a mile long for a, a, an ordinance violation, you just don't really see that, uh, in our experience.
Yeah, so, I had a comment.
I just thought it might be helpful to add, um, since it was referenced, I know we're talking about camping ordinance, but I do think it's important to add because. Our police partners have been enforcing, um, in a way that does connect people to resources. That the city council and, um, in combination with Olmsted County and recommendation from the police department and others. Did just invest in four additional community outreach workers, um, focused on drug and alcohol addiction. To complement the mental health, community outreach workers that already are working with Olmsted County and that's a critical, that's a, I mean, it's doubling and going from zero to four. As far as community outreach for drug and alcohol addiction, so they work very closely together, the police department and the community outreach team. Um, I always get it wrong, is it community outreach team?
Engagement.
Engagement, always get that wrong, um, team in order to do that and there is significant additional investment that's coming in that space. There's also been conversation and I believe that Salvation Army and Catholic charities are talking about working together. To be able to have overflow space, the board for Salvation Army still needs to take action on that a little bit in the middle of this month. So to be able to have additional overflow, um, for the warming center in the coldest months of the year.
So, go ahead, Ms. Dennis.
I think I just, I have, I have a lot of questions, but I'll just ask three more here, um, so one issue that was brought up and I've looked into the, as well, I mean. Uh, Senator Bolden mentioned about the, you know, what's in, in the ordinance about the D E I. Um, disproportionate, uh, impact on people of color. Has that been, I mean, looked at as, as we're actually, you know, if we pass this ornament, ordinance contributing to, um, systemic. Racism to, to, uh, increase the gap for, for people. Uh, of color BIPOC, BIPOC population, um. For having success in our city, having now be more prone. To being arrested, having more likelihood of having criminal records. If, um, they're higher population, uh, not unsheltered as it is.
Council member, I can answer that, um, you know, again, we're gonna continue to evaluate each one of these on a case by case basis, we're gonna continue to work with people as much as we possibly can. Giving them very opportunity to make positive decisions, positive choices in, in their lives, again, very, very few of these instances are gonna kind of go downline as far as we're talking about here. But I think, um, I think that you're really bringing up a good point in reference to how complex the breadth and depth of complexity to homelessness. And I think that's one of the sources of strength for this community, as we're not done with this conversation after tonight. This, this is not the endpoint, this is the, quite frankly, the new beginning, if you will, as we move forward in coming up with additional solutions. And additional problem solving efforts with all of our partners in this community to include. How do we limit and reduce the impacts, um, on the marginalized community, which are, those conversations are happening across the board on multiple levels within R P D.
Um, well, thank you for answering, um, I, okay, but my other, my next question is. We've heard from, um, parents, I mean, I'm a parent, I've never had to experience homelessness. But you have an incredible increase in poverty in children, I, I read that it's up four hundred. Students in R P S, and make sure I get this right, um, quote, right, it's like six hundred and forty students are without permanent shelter. Right here in Rochester, which is up four hundred since last year, and so children are having an incredible impact. Um, with, with struggling, um, you know, parents and. So what's, what's gonna happen if you have parents, you know, or sleep, having. To slip in the cars, like I, I mentioned, as when I was, uh, working for R P S, a child came every day who slept in his car with his mother. Um, what's gonna happen with that component, if, if you have people repeatedly violating and they have children involved, is that gonna be? Um, I, I mean, what's gonna happen to the kids?
So I think that would be another instance that doesn't match our experience, uh, when they went out for a two-week period, they weren't finding families. In the encampments, I would shudder, I would work twenty-four hours a day if I thought there were, there was kids in these encampments, they're that dangerous. The behavior there is that bad, that, that, um. We, we're just not seeing it, we're seeing people that are involved in criminal activity that are severely, uh, impaired by either addiction or mental health. And they really aren't safe places and even those that are trying just to find a place to sleep are being victimized on a regular basis, they don't. Typically report a lot, uh, which is unfortunate, um, so they're, they're just trying to get through the night, so a- again, I think we. We have partners that do way better, uh, or, or seem to have more success. Uh, finding temporary shelter for families than, than individuals, I guess is the best way to play it, put it in. And Echo Team didn't come across any families in that whole, I don't remember, I, I don't want to misquote their work, but. In the whole week or two that they were out there every day and night. Uh, with lived experience individuals showing them where the encampments were, informing them about. Whether it was safe to go into that encampment or not safe to go into that encampment. And all the things that, uh, again, provide us a little bit of a roadmap on how we can do better. And, and, and not, um. Throwing everybody into the same. Circumstance, I think the council members Keens, there's a lot of moving parts to this problem, this is designed. To deal with a very small part of it, which is unsafe encampments in, on city property.
And I, I think maybe that's how you define children too, because I know I've talked to teens who are out on the street in Rochester. And I would consider them youth, um, as children, so, but my, my last, my, I mean, I have a lot of questions, but I. We have always time situations going on, my last question is, well, some other cities. Have, I imagine they have maybe bans like this, I'm not sure, but they have, uh, homes, people will open up their yards. Churches will open up their properties to allow encampments to come. I've seen this, um, when I was in DC and, and other places where, where church. Yards are just filled with tents and you have, what's gonna happen if, like, I have a big yard, I'm on Elton Hills, I have a, you know, a third of an acre in my backyard. If I said, okay, let's see, I would, there's no place for you, um, to go, bring your tents into my backyard. And, um, what would happen to the homeowner? Myself, which I'm very, I'm thinking, I, I mean, if people need places to go, I can see myself, um. Doing things like this, what would happen to the homeowner? If they have permanent people, people living in their yard because of this ordinance?
I, I can maybe try to address that, council member, you know, we don't have a lot of purview of our private property, but I think again, as we look at this, uh, that would be something that we would. Uh, probably address with our city partners here and, and community development and, and in one of the regulations for that particular property. Uh, you know, there are certain stipulations and regulations for what you can and cannot do on your property, you can't turn it into a motel or a hotel and, uh, we'd have to problem solve that one.
Could you give me, could you give me example, because I mean, this is a, a serious thing that I've, you know, seen happen. What, what would be, uh, would it be a fine for someone to open up their yard, would it be a, um, uh, I don't know, I mean, I got, you know. Someone doesn't like how many toys in your backyard, they'll report you, you know, like, I know people are, you know, watching over their, other's neighbors' shoulders, um, at times. What would happen to a resident in Rochester who decided to make their yard a park?
So it would be a zoning violation right now, uh.
Uh folks can camp for up to thirty days if they wanted in their backyard. Um we find zoning compliance through education in about seventy-seven percent of instances. So we generally, we've never assessed a fee for something like this. I don't see that something being an action we would take either. So it would be a longer process for resolution, but there's some ordinances to protect long-term camping on a private property.
Thank you. All right, councilmember Wal.
I remember. Uh I I am supportive of uh the ordinance. I understand it to be a draft. Uh I would just make a suggestion or a hope that uh the city attorney's office could uh consult with the leadership of the landing in order to uh make this the very best ordinance before coming back for a final presentation to the council.
Councilmember Palmer.
Well, thank you. Um I'll just, I have an article here from um the Tribune. It says child poverty is at four point six percent as the thirty-year drop continues. Um in nineteen ninety, it was twenty point nine percent of children in poverty. Now we're at four point six, um still not good, but it's a lot better than than it was the past. So let's go to homelessness, and you know, we have a twenty fourteen resolution, and and we tried that and obviously not working, things have changed. I believe everybody in that industry would tell you that that things have changed. And I think everybody has to remember, these are our brothers and sisters. But I listened to our county people tell me, and and the county has said many different times that they want to encourage people to services, and that's what our police department has been asked to do, is is to do that. Um I was lucky enough this last um summer to ride along and in 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 when with the police department and look at the homeless camps that they've had and and how they speak to the to the residents. And um if you listen long enough and you listen to the questions and the people, um our police department did a phenomenally good job of compassion and listening to problems and trying to solve a problem and trying to find out why they are in a tent and not in services. And and some of them, it's just their way of saying, I don't want to be in a shelter. You know, the city council, just about a month ago, with our CDBG money, we put an investment in the Salvation Army of fifteen thousand dollars more to prevent homelessness. Um it's not like the city council isn't trying to help and and move this along. Um you know, I I get frustrated when I hear, well, what we need is a state hospital. Well, the state hospital closed in the eighties. You know, in in, you know, if we can't solve this problem, if there are state people can't solve this problem a little bit differently. Um you know, I I get tired of hearing, well, the state hospital closed, well, that was in the nineteen eighties. Um and so I support this, and I I commend our police department for the compassion that I have seen and witnessed. Um I'm out in the parks a lot, and um it's become a problem in in that we need to have this ordinance. And I appreciate Mr. Keen's motion.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dennis, do you want to go, or do you want me to go?
Oh, you can go.
Okay. Okay, so I've lost a lot of sleep over this. This is uh one of those things that there is just absolutely not a right answer to. I keep talking myself in and out of voting both ways and going in circles the whole time. So first of all, I want to thank everyone who reached out to share their concerns. Um I'll just quickly share how I'm processing this to try to get to a a decision uh for how to vote. So we know, we've talked about, we know that addressing homelessness requires a community-wide commitment and investment of resources, certainly policing is just one piece of that. We're so fortunate in this community to have partners, including the city, willing to come together regularly, have these difficult conversations, and ultimately develop bigger picture goals and strategies like uh Administrator Zalms and Captain Stillwell mentioned, to ensure that we are housing as many people as possible and that being unsheltered is brief and a one-time experience. So whatever happens tonight, know that we are having these broader conversations. And this is the city, uh an example of the city grappling with an immediate need based on several public health and safety concerns. Okay, so with my background in public health, I do of course have significant concerns with the conditions associated with camping in the parks. Captain Stillwell has talked about those a lot. Not only are they not equipped with sanitary services for those utilizing spaces, but our staff experience considerable challenges and risks to their own health and safety in the cleanup of the sites. We know we've had multiple deaths and fires that have gone unnoticed for varying lengths of time, which is both heartbreaking and a public health concern on many levels. I try to base my decisions using a framework of our city's foundational principles, a couple of which are compassion, equity, public and public safety. This is an example of where those aren't all that helpful, because you can interpret them in so many different ways. So while I absolutely have compassion for our police and our park staff, as well as our residents and visitors, who are residents and visitors who expect a safe and welcoming community, I also, of course, have compassion for those who are experiencing homelessness and perhaps in the most difficult time of their lives due to a wide variety of circumstances, often out of their control. I know many cities have recently enacted bans or continuing to enact bans. It was hard for me to find really good research on what they're actually achieving. So I'm not sure how, I I know there are some good examples of how people have connected to resources, but it seems like we're still unclear of what we're actually, whether we're actually going to work towards achieving our broader goals in our community. We know that the police are saying this is unlikely to result in criminalizing homelessness, which I so appreciate, and I certainly trust them at their word. It does potentially result in uh consequences that could create more barriers to accessing housing and employment in the future, and that's concerning to me. So in short, uh or in long, hopefully, all of you know that this is an unbearably hard uh decision to make. It's incredibly complex, and there's no right answer. We're all trying to do what we think is best for the city. Um and I understand and support my colleagues, however they vote. I know that no matter how I vote, I'm going to be letting people down, including people I care about and respect and uh trust me. And that's a really hard reality for me. But ultimately, I'm going to have to follow what my heart is telling me uh is the best vote, and that is to have compassion for our most marginalized community members. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. I'm, I probably should prepare my statements ahead of time, too. I think that would um alleviate a lot of issues with this council if I had things prepared and I could read off. Because I I'm writing a million things down, uh because there's a million things that I think are issues. Um I I do thank the Parks Department and the Police Department. And I know you uh are, you know, doing the best you can to to help people. I am kind of a direct and blunt, um perhaps blunt, communicator. So my colleagues like to use other words like hostile, but I do know I'm direct. I don't want to take, have anyone take offense to this, hopefully. But I feel, I hear just a lot of platitudes, and I need to work on my platitudes. But the words breadth and depth and and different, um you know, hopeful thinking are wonderful. I mean, I I I want to live in that land, but these aren't reasonable restrictions to someone who is struggling from trauma, PTSD, addictions, abuse. Um I know people who, myself included, who have gone through extreme trauma and abuse. And it it's, you're in a really dark time in life, and reasonable restrictions isn't like, well, get out of the park and, you know, avoid a fine. This is, um, these are people at the most vulnerable times in their life. Some, of course, are um more nomadic. Uh we have a history in our country of indigenous people who um were nomadic. Um so I mean, I'm not, I'm saying there's a lot of uh reasons of every fifty people, there's fifty um probably reasons why they're experiencing homelessness. But I feel that words have a lot of power, and I don't always choose my words the best. But um camping is not the word we should be using. Camping is a choice. Camping, my kids and I like to go camping. Camping is a a a something that you have, you know, a recreational um thing in your life. This is surviving in parks, this is surviving the cold and the elements. I think we should rename this, everything we do is get rid of the word camping and and say, you know, people who are uh life or death, making decisions so that they don't die. You know, ordinance or something. So I also feel that um words like uncomfortable that was used, I I I'm not going to re, you know, say all the wonderful things that were brought up in open comment, but it is an issue, I believe, of inconvenience and nuisance. I believe we have the world's best hospital, and uh people come to the hospital and then, of course, can't find somewhere to live and then become homeless. And you have people from other areas that come to Rochester in hopes to find a health and healing and are now on the streets. So I I feel, you know, we want to be out of sight, out of mind. Um but we're, what we're really talking about is the worth of a life. And we, um there are so many amazing words from people who spoke today, but that's what we're we're looking at. We're saying this, people, residents, who do not have homes do not have as much worth as residents who do. And I think that is horrendous. Um I have, I wish I had better words to to express how sad my heart is that this is even on the table. Um I I'm not watching my time, but I I know that this is not just about beds. This is about staffing people. If you, if they don't have a a staff member and, you know, enough staff, even if they have fifteen beds, they have to turn people away. There's fifteen empty beds in the warming center, and fifteen people are on the streets because they don't have enough staffing. This is not, this is very complex, and it's incredibly delicate, but punishment is not the answer. Uh making people have a record, a criminal record, if pushing things in the court systems, um you know, causing more shame. Uh we're already ostracizing um people in our our community. Uh and and we're, I went to the landing's presentation uh this past weekend, and uh someone who has experienced homelessness said it's a desocialization where he felt that um he's no longer part of society, and he got a criminal record. I I wouldn't want to misquote, but I believe because he stole food so he wouldn't starve. I mean, this this is wrong, and in our great country, in a great um city like Rochester, uh to have third world kind of situations where we are treating people like garbage and stepping over them and not making eye contact, instead of, instead of doing, we need to really, really focus on compassion and humanity and say, meet people where they're at, listen. I I talked about that challenge of a a person who was talking to me um about every elected official should spend a night in the in the uh warming center. And I waited hours to do so, and they didn't have enough beds. So I instead volunteered, and I really hope that every single elected official on on this dais and in the county and the mayor to uh volunteer at the landing and volunteer at the warming center, volunteer at Dorothy Day and Salvation Army, and then come back up here and see if you can pass this kind of ordinance, because I don't think you could. Thank you.
Councilmember Bransford.
One of the things that struck me the most was this discussion of if a family were in this encampment and the visceral reaction, the compassionate, visceral reaction to that, that they would work twenty-four hours a day to remove a family from that situation clearly is at odds, completely at odds, to suggesting that the Rochester Police Department lacks compassion, that it's only punitive, but it's absolutely not true.
Clarification, I did not suggest that at all. Councilmember Bransford, I have the utmost respect for for the Rochester Police Department, and I believe they have incredible compassion. Please don't put words in my mouth. Thank you.
Put them in there yourself.
Should, I'll call the question.
Ready to vote? Do you mind doing a roll call? Thank you.
Councilmember Keen.
Hi.
Councilmember Bransford.
Hi.
Councilmember Wal.
Hi.
Councilmember Palmer.
Hi.
Councilmember Dennis.
Nay.
Council President Carlson.
Nay.
There are four ayes and two nays.
All right, motion carries four to two, and we will take a break and reconvene at ten thirty. Thank you, everyone, so much.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
All right, we are moving on to item H three, which was formerly F ten and that is the temporary parking program. It involves two hour free par- parking pulled by councilmember Dennis. Are you ready to talk us through why you pulled this item, councilmember Dennis?
Yes. Yes, I, I pulled the item. I think we should have more parking. I was down at an event, uh, at the chateau, which was wonderful, where it was a, um, beautiful music thing and it lasted an hour. And I went to participate in a, uh, wonderful downtown, uh, experience and I got a parking ticket. Because you can't go to an hour long experience in the chateau with the meter or things running. So, um, I, I really believe we need more longer parking and that's not the issue. Um, the, the issue I think is using contingency funds, which, uh, I kind of looked up is for, you know, for unexpected, I would say almost emergencies use. And then also, um, that, that when we look at, there, there's probably other ways instead of using taxpayer dollars for this, being more creative such as perhaps if someone's downtown shopping and they get a ticket, bring their receipt that they, you know, of a purchase that they made at that time that the ticket was issued. And have a get out of, I mean, I have never in my life fixed a ticket, ever in my life, but, uh, maybe the, the city hall could say, okay, that's a get out of a ticket free card during the holidays or something like that. Instead of spending money, um, for people who can't afford to pay that extra time or who just want it for other reasons. Uh, I think we could think more creatively outside the box and, um, not use twenty thousand dollars of taxpayer property tax to, um, do this program. So that's why I pulled this item.
So is there a motion or is there a, a motion on the table?
Um, well, I, I would like to, um, a- amend the, the, um, I guess I, I wanted to just kind of brainstorm.
Motion to amend.
No motions. You can make up whatever motion you want.
Oh, wonderful. I would like to make a motion to have the city draft up some kind of, um, uh, policy that would allow people during those months that are proposed to have some form of get out of ticket if they are participating in downtown activities and not use taxpayer dollars. Thank you. I mean, I worded better than that, but that's what I would.
Is there a second? All right, is there a different motion?
I'll, I'll move adopt the resolution authorizing the use of twenty thousand in contingency to support a temporary parking program, offering two hour free parking.
Second.
Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, again, this is, uh, in my view, this is a follow on to the downtown task force as we approach the holiday season. Um, it is something that we try to run our parking as an enterprise as we should. Um, the enterprise has looked at this and said, we just can't take this on. So I think it's a reasonable thing that we as the council, if we support this way of supporting downtown businesses, we spend, we support it through our contingency.
We, uh, councilmember Kirkpatrick and I, do you mind if I go first? Okay. Had a great meeting with some of our downtown businesses and, um, Ms. Harrington from RDA about a whole set of strategies. And I know there's broader conversations that will happen in the near term, uh, around other opportunities to alleviate some of the pressure on downtown businesses and, and parking. And Ms. Turi, you were just wonderful at that meeting as was your team. So thank you so much for thinking creatively and coming back with a concrete proposal that does split the costs across two funding streams. I think that's really nice to see. We're not proposing to use forty thousand dollars of contingency, but I just wanted to say that this is, one of the things that resonated most with me during that meeting was it's not necessarily a cost. Well, it's a short term cost to the city, but if you think about it and as a way of promoting business, as a way of potentially getting more cars into our ramps, there's an, there's another side of this argument from an economic perspective. So I think it's a small price to pay for really showing support that we said we were going to do through the recommendations of the downtown task force, uh, a starting place that will be measured to see what the impact is. And, uh, more conversations to come. So I'm really excited about it and I think it's a good short term solution. Councilmember Dennis?
Just, uh, uh, again, I think with the property tax being the way we was voted on, this is not the use for contingency. So I do think that there are other ways, solutions to support downtown businesses and to allow parking. Um, even the two hour parking. I mean, if you go down and shopping and have a meal or something, then you're, you know, you're going to have, I mean, if you want people to spend time downtown, I mean, it's, it's, um, we do want to eliminate the issue with fees on parking. But I, like I said, I think we should look into the future so that we can find creative approaches and, um, not put it on taxpayers and also support the downtown, um, uh, revitalization. Thank you.
And again, this is one strategy as part of our broader rate study that will come back with different sets of recommendations, which will all be asking to use taxpayer funded, uh, approaches. Councilmember Wal, then Palmer.
Yeah, we, we've talked about revitalization of downtown, uh, for months and months, uh, ever since kind of the coming out of the virus. So I'm very supportive of this. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to capture some data that will assist us in, uh, making decisions in the future that will, uh, as well, uh, support the, the revitalization of our downtown.
Councilmember Palmer?
Well, I think everybody knows that we have one hour free parking, so we're really just adding one more hour. You know, to, to support our downtown businesses, I spend a lot of time downtown. I have lots of quarters in my truck for the meters. Um, and I too get tickets and I gladly pay them, um, as a reminder. But I think that you gotta remember, if you're going to support our downtown businesses, you actually have to put your money where your mouth is. And, and I think that this is important to me that, that we let our businesses downtown know that we're with them a hundred and ten percent. What can we do? This is a little bit to help them out. Um, and so I, I'm glad that this came up and I wish it would have came up even sooner. So, thank you.
All right, final discussion. Ms. Elms?
Maybe just a great opportunity to also remind people that ramps and meters are free after five and on the weekends until two AM. And so that is also an opportunity for people for if you count one hour free and in the ramps and three, if you count two hours free in the ramps and you get there at three oh one. This is approved.
And the RDA will help us spread the word, right? Okay. All right, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion carries. Moving on to F twenty-four, which is now H.
Uh, point of clarification, F twenty.
F twenty, H four, which was F twenty, contracts with enterprise fleet management for lease of police vehicles. I see Captain Turk hanging out in the back, so hear if there are questions. And Ms. Dennis?
Yes, well, I, I pulled the item because changes were made. Uh, at three o'clock, we received an email, which, uh, doesn't give adequate time to really compare the, what we were studying. You know, since the council packet came out to what we're voting on. So I just would love it if someone could come explain the differences and the changes that we are voting on so that we are informed policymakers and make the most informed decision. Thank you.
Yeah, I could maybe just take that one because, um, we've been working together on this as a team and a lot of important points here, but specifically to the, uh, adjustment, um, or the reason for the last piece, uh, really it was just reflecting the final agreements, um, that included, uh, the city attorneys suggested feedback enterprise, you know, to confirm that that was acceptable. Really just took place in three areas, um, some just additional language to reflect data protections, um, some, uh, cross liability or joint indemnification. And then venueing, uh, any disputes in Minnesota and Missouri, which is a pretty standard things. We've tried to get into a lot of our contracts. So on that, this is a, a pilot, um, a way for us to procure vehicles. It's just a little bit differently, but I'm really hoping that we can, um, get accessibility some, for some police vehicles. There's a bit of a crisis in this space right now. Um, we're really having a challenge, uh, getting those, the, between strikes, computer chips and just general procurement. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, challenge and we're really hoping to be able to use this as a mechanism to pull down some vehicles. So without it, we are here as a team to answer any questions or Lieutenant Turk's here as well. Captain Turk, sorry.
Councilmember Keen?
Uh, you can hear in the background, I did want to get a, a motion on the table to adopt the resolution authorizing contracts with enterprise fleet and the acquisition of lease of police vehicles. Second.
Councilmember Keen?
Uh, again, I, I was a little bit worried about this when I saw it. I thought this was a way of getting around some of our city thing, but I did some work with staff on, and understanding why we got to this place, why it's just police at this point. If it's a pilot for the overall city or it really is, it only makes sense for part of the city. Uh, and I understand it better now and I think this is a short term. In my view, right now it's a gap to help resolve some of the fleet problems we're going to have in the coming months.
Councilmember Palmer?
Well, I, I go even further. I think it's a great idea that our police department reached out and thought something outside the box and, and checked with other departments what they're doing. Um, you know, for a person that used to drive old police cars and they'd hand them down to us, um, there's not much life left in them when they're, they're done with them. Um, and so I, I think this is wonderful that they thought outside and, and, and looked at other things and and I read it that the cost savings is going to be there and, and I think that's wonderful for us. So I, I applaud the police for, for doing this.
Yes.
I, I always cringe when there's someone else in the, in the supply chain now to get paid and how we're going to save money on that, but I'll, I'll defer that for, for another time.
Councilmember Dennis?
So originally when I was looking, uh, over this, I was concerned about competitive bidding. However, uh, there was an email sent about how the bidding process has occurred. So I, that answered my questions and I was just going to, I'm, I'm very supportive of, of this and was going to just vote on it. I just would like in the future that if changes are made, that the item is pulled for the reason that public, uh, residents do not have access to the emails and the information and the changes that we have. And I believe just for basic representational democracy and having informed, um, public that we pull items that have changes made at the last minute. So I'm a big supporter of this. I'm, I just wanted it to be out there for everyone. So, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right. H five, which was F twenty-four, the development agreement for Mayo Woodlands, um, for preserve of Mayo Wood, pulled also by councilmember Dennis. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I know there was someone at public comment who, who spoke on, uh, this item and who, and who, um, has concerns with the, um, next steps. I polled both of these items, twenty-four and twenty-five, uh, for the reason that we had not voted on in the, in the, uh, public hearings yet. So we, it looks like putting the cart before the horse and voting to approve something that we haven't even approved yet and had a public hearing for. So I felt just for, uh, precedent setting to pull it and now approve it now that the public hearing is over. We've heard comments and approved those items in G, uh, three and G four, I believe. So I have, or no, not G three, G four. Well, now that they're approved.
So you'd make a motion to?
Yes, I, I make a motion to approve, uh, the development agreement with Mayo.
And I'll second.
Any further comment? Or any, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. F twenty-five, similarly, councilmember Dennis, go ahead.
Just going to make a motion, uh, because we've already now approved, uh, the CityWalk Apartments. And so now, I believe now it's the right time to approve F twenty-five, um, which is I moved to approve the individual site development agreement with CityWalk Rochester LLC for CityWalk Apartments.
That's it.
All right, councilmember Dennis, any further discussion? Any other? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right, we don't have any CIA's tonight, but we do have, uh, one ordinance first reading and one second reading. So Mr. Spindler, Craig, when you're ready?
Thank you, Madam President. There is one first reading, J one, an ordinance removing proposed R two X zoning districts from amended zoning map and rezoning parcels consistent with the comprehensive plan and amending ordinance number four, four, seven, eight, known as the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester, Minnesota. Moving on to the second reading, item K one, an ordinance rezoning approximately twelve point one seven acres of land from R one, mixed, single family to R two, single family, small lot, and amending ordinance number four, four, seven, eight, known as the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester, Minnesota.
I'll move approval. Second.
Member Keen?
Nothing to add.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right, we don't have any tabled items. I had one quick item of other business and I know councilmember Dennis does. Uh, so I'll be quick, but I do want to take a minute to just say, I know council does not typically weigh in on national and international events for very obvious and good reasons. Uh, but I did want to take a moment to acknowledge that, uh, there's a lot of pain and fear in our community right now. Because of multiple international crises, but of course, including the war in the Middle East. And I was at an, the N double A C P event this weekend. And the chapter president, Wale Alagbeday, said it so well. We cannot have a thriving community if we tolerate racism, Islamophobia and antisemitism. So I just want to say, have this moment to say that we need to stand up against hate in all its forms and show compassion for our neighbors and so many people of all different backgrounds. Feel, so they can feel safe and welcomed in this community. So it's not big picture, but people are experiencing a lot of hardship and hate directed at them in this community that we, we live. And I just hope that we can all contribute to making it the best place possible.
Amen. Amen.
Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you. Um, no, I, I, I agree with those words and I would like to just, um, to bring it here to Rochester a little bit more too, where, where there is a lot of, um, otherizing, a lot of, uh, people using very powerful words, um, without realizing the ripple effect that that hap- has on, on, um, bias and different, um, perspectives. So I do hope that that, not just globally and, and nationally, but when we um, connect with people from all walks of life here in Rochester, from, we just had a discussion with people, our friends on the street, people experiencing homelessness, to people who have many different, um, ability levels, to many different, um, backgrounds. So I, I would like to just extend that. And I always like to have open, um, other business because of comments people made. I did want to bring up the ZIPS, um, comment brought up by Mr. Busby. And here's some feedback from staff on what is going to happen if those, those positions are, um, open because people are leaving them because of pay and, and, uh, circumstances. So I just wanted to throw that out there to answer the question of, um, Mr. Busby from this morning, of this earlier today.
Ms. Turi?
Sure, council, council president, council members. Um, you know, we have been, again, the negotiation part is really, is trans of and it's up to them and we are staying out of that. We have had, we've, because we've heard the same thing, we cannot afford. We have had, we've, because we've heard the same thing, we cannot afford to have to dispatch people gone. They do have some other dispatch people, so they're making sure that there would be coverage if something happens. So we have had those conversations with them and we feel like we're prepared. I mean, not, not what we want, right? But we feel like we're prepared, they're prepared to, to manage through it if that does happen.
Right, thank you.
And you have deliverables in the contract that you end up meeting with them on and that they do have to meet. And so they would need to find a way to meet the deliverables that you continue to meet on. And you also have authorized, you've pre-authorized the hiring of two positions that would also assist Ms. Turri and others with the ZIPS program.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So may.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.